Meeting with select board.
Yes.
Kathy here.
Here.
And here. Becky isn't on. We are scheduled to have a public hearing at six forty-five. It's been advertised at various times. This is a public hearing on the water rates. And but the agenda, which is the official document, says six forty-five. So I suggest we start with a discussion from of the open meeting law and meeting attendance. Just because that is likely to be quick. Often, people, members of the select board attend other boards' meetings. And they're, even though there is a liaison, other people want to join. Our general, general understanding is the liaison is there to attend and understand, but not to contribute. And I was warned at this training that if there was a forum and that we were contributing, then we would be in trouble with the open meeting. So the only, the reason to bring this up is if there are three of us in the audience, or if there may be three of us in the audience, we should not say anything and bring it back and discuss it in our liaison section.
Fair enough.
That one. We could go over the action items, yes. We certainly have the pickleball for tonight. Yeah, schedule the, uh, town administrator's report. The police chief. That's what I missed. Let's finish this one. Is there anything that we need to add to the agenda to the action items?
No, I thought we took an action to do is review the success of the beach bums and their new venture.
I think that it's prematurely because they just got on board last week.
No, I know, but I'm just saying, I think we took an action to have them come back and I didn't see it on the list. So that's the only thing I can think of that I've been missing.
That was supposed to be tonight.
Right, but they just got started, like you said, this weekend, so.
So would you say the first, uh, meeting in August or the second one? The seventh or the twenty-first?
Let's, let's do the first, the seventh.
Okay.
Because if there are issues, we want to get them before they're done. If I had read my agenda, I would know that after the call to order, there's moment for, or time for public comments on non-agenda items. Is there anyone with a comment on a non-agenda item? Then what is the discussion on the kind of public forum, right?
But just to confirm that we'll be doing that on the twenty-seventh of July. Just confirm the time, it was starting at six thirty or seven. And then other, what information you would like presented at that meeting? Um. So we have the report, we have four different options. You can have those presented. We're trying to get some schematics made, 3D sketches. People relate a little better to discuss the engineering drawing.
Are we working on that now?
Yes.
If you can get a low tide and a high tide, that would be good.
What about, um, we received some feedback questioning how we would fund it. So do we want to get some feedback from the public at all on possible funding avenues? Someone had mentioned like fundraising or, you know, how much will the appetite is for taxation versus fundraising, just to get some feedback.
And you should certainly be going on that.
And grants, you know, whatever the all, you know, the options are and the public understand that. CDC, that's something.
So the general thought is to start off with the overview, present the options. Basically open up to public comment. The basics of it. So that's, that's sounding good. Then we'll proceed with that.
Okay, this, this will be on slides, I guess?
Yes.
Okay, that's fine. So as, as Kathy mentioned, there should be a slide on summarizing financing situation.
Yep.
We then found to rework, uh, they thought that the option of extending it on might not be as expensive as.
Yeah, let me check with them to see if they have any more information on that.
And the thought is to do it this one? And the thought is to do it here, this one?
Yes.
And the folks that put together the report, would they be here?
Yes.
Okay.
Or, or.
Yeah, because, fine, because there will be questions that.
Sure, we can answer.
For sure.
I think we want to wait on the fine structure for well regulations and you have something to speak to it. What is the situation with the powder house? We, we need to agree to send a letter.
Well, that's the recommended next step.
Yes.
So, uh, open space immigration committee had been discussing it. So as I explained, the situation is that there, there's a easement that the town has. The current buildings do encroach on that easement. So.
I'm sorry, Greg, what is the encroachment on the easement?
The buildings.
The buildings themselves.
The buildings themselves.
So it's not, I was trying to understand what the issue is because I'm there every day and were people being asked not to use the path or just the fact that the buildings exist? I'm trying to understand what the issue is.
So the, the easement would have allowed parking space as well.
Okay.
So the question, the real issue is parking.
Parking, okay, because I, I've used that path. I've never been told I shouldn't or couldn't.
Right, you, you're not kicked off the path. The question really is the parking area.
Okay.
This is the path at the end of the parking lot.
Yes.
Yes.
No, and there's two other paths on Pine Street, but the parking.
Yeah, that's the most biggest access.
So the letter basically says, if you have this problem, you'd like better access. Can, can we have a conversation to resolve this?
Do we have an anticipate? Do we have an idea as to what we would be looking for as a resolution?
So, um, easy, the easiest resolution is to allow one or two parking spaces to be used by the public. That's the easiest. If that's not something that is possible, then we need to talk about where we can build parking spaces or two. We knew of the fact that our easement is encroached on. So people are okay with the letter?
Yeah.
Processing it, reviewing it out. So if that's in your heads, I'll take that as a yes, we proceed.
Just to clarify for me and anybody else who's confused, the relationship between, um, the housing authority and the town, what is the relationship between the housing authority and the town?
So the housing authority is, is an agency of the state. So they, they are not a town organization person. We have a representative, we have representatives on that. Members of the community serve as board members on the housing authority. Uh, but it is a separate entity. It's, it's a state agency in essence. It's not a town entity.
For those of you who just done in, um, our hearing, um, the water rates is taking the six forty-five. And I don't want to start before everyone does with the agenda against the agenda. So we're picking things out of our agenda that aren't time-sensitive and blocking them on. And then we send agenda, um, definitely the resignation of the library trustee. We'll write her a nice letter and back her for service.
Exactly, yes.
So this, that's an elected position, but we can appoint a replacement.
Correct, so you, so, so you.
Not till the next election.
Correct. So you would meet in a joint session with the library trustees to interview and then vote on a replacement and that person would serve until the next election.
Is this a position we would post?
Yes, yeah, yeah, we, we give the word out that that is a vacancy and that you're accepting applications for. You can do C as well.
Yeah, that seemed like a good idea. Is there any discussion on the longevity beach bench? John?
No, I'm, I, I, I read all the information. In fact, there were, I didn't count them, but there were a lot of photos.
Yes.
So, uh, uh, they, they look fine and this is, this is bench. Let me at least, is this what, twenty-six and twenty-seven, twenty, in the twenties? Something like that. Good, and in good spots, yeah.
My only question is, is there any plan long-term for maintenance? And I realize that they're built to be relatively maintenance-free, but sooner or later, this event cracks or yeah, well, the benches are guaranteed not to bust. And that's really important in this environment. We are putting together, um, sort of finishing brigade, if you will, uh, people who will go and take care of, uh, cleaning them and keeping them passed. And I noticed that I've got a couple that are near, uh, on state land and some that are near trees and bushes that are starting to encroach, serving probes, so, so taking the, uh, the air rights directly above the, and give that turn back.
Yep.
Now to approve the location of the new longevity bench.
Please say that.
We'll come over.
Yes.
Yeah, Kathy, yes. I said, yes.
We had a motion on the resignation.
I guess, I'm sure.
Yeah, I, I move to accept the resignation of the library trustee.
I'll, I'll second. Yes.
Yes, answered yes.
I say yes.
Okay. Oh, we'll try to find a reappointment of the treasurer. Is there such a motion?
I move to ratify the reappointment of the treasurer.
Second.
Discussion? Maybe well.
Yes.
Kathy, yes. And so yes, John says yes. Okay. At six forty-four, I would make a motion to open a hearing on, on the water and sewer rates.
The move.
Second.
Kathy?
Yes.
Answered yes.
John says yes.
Okay. Um, we all have the suggested new rates, and I think we've all met discussion of those rates. Briefly for anybody who hasn't been following the program. Um, the water resource task force has come up with new water rates that are intended to discourage excess usage of potable water, water that's been treated on and is drinking water. Manchester uses a lot of it. Manchester has a lot. But, um, the, the task force has suggested a that we reduce the number of tiers and increase the rate for to higher tiers. The full information is in the packet. Don't have it. So, uh.
So Steve Gay also has a short presentation.
Okay, yes, absolutely.
Do that.
Um, when we get to the point where we're hearing from people, I want to hear from everybody who has something to say. I would like to limit remarks to two minutes, which will be time. Um, and please try to avoid saying the same thing to a person two or three before you've just said. So that we can, in fact, hear from, from everybody and, and get as many points as possible. So Steve, you are not limited to two minutes.
Thank you. I'll try to, I'll try to be brief. Can you hear me? Excellent. And may I share a screen?
Then you should have permission.
I seem to, thank you. All right, uh, without a whole lot of, uh, of, uh, background, these are the recommendations. The task force on water resources made to the select board over two months ago. And as Ann said, we recommended simplifying to four tiers instead of six. And that's partly because the first two tiers, um, the, the first tier has very few people falling in it and the tier six has very few people falling in it. Um, and we also recommended that the historical practice of having only a small difference between the lowest rates for the first tier and the highest rates for the top tier uh, that we change that and, um, increase the rates for the tiers three and four, the largest use much more significantly than tiers one and two. And in fact, we recommended a reduction in the rate in tier one. Uh, since someone who remains in that tier is already by any objective standard conserving drinking water. So these are the, these are the numbers. You'll see here, we also recommend doing this in concert with a couple of other recommendations. One, to, uh, start a more intensive program of information and education for people who want that. And even specific custom advice for people who would like to conserve, particularly those who are using large amounts of water today. Um, and you've agreed to to, uh, have the capability installed for that within the sustainability committee, which we're gearing up to do. Uh, we also recommended, um, installation of new water meters because most of our water meters are past their useful life. And since they are mechanical, uh, they are probably somewhat clogged up with the, uh, iron and other minerals that come in our drinking water and therefore probably not reading accurately anymore. And there's a new generation of meters that measure things digitally with no moving parts and supply their information in fifteen-minute intervals. Both to the water division and also to users who are interested in tracking such things on their smartphone. Uh, presently, we track every ninety days, so that would be a, a significant uh, improvement in measurement and it would enable us to monitor the effects of a change as significant as the one we're proposing here. So just a quick look at, uh, the, um, entire extent of recommendations that came out of the task force, eighteen months of work with a lot of analysis and some expert advice from consultants on various subjects. As you can see, the first three all pertain to conservation and, uh, more accurate measurement. And I'd urge anybody who, um, hasn't had a chance to at least look at the seven-page executive summary of the work and the recommendations of the task force, it's backed up by a seventy-five page more detailed report and then even more detailed appendices. So there's been no lack of, uh, sweat expended on this, this one. And I'm very proud to have been part of it, grateful to the people who contributed. A quick look at what this will do. Uh, it's of course difficult to summarize on a single chart. But this chart tracks gallons per quarter used by a metered household versus dollars per quarter. So, and this chart would pertain to ninety percent of the households in Manchester who are below, as a group, below a hundred and twenty thousand gallons a year. We're, we're going to make up a, uh, change to reporting bills in gallons. DPW is going to do that. Because nobody has a really intuitive sense of what a cubic foot is and nobody wants to go through the arithmetic and converting. So we're going to try to stay in gallons here. But you can see the majority, you can't see this, but I'll tell you, the majority of households are down at this end of the chart I'm showing you. And what happens under the new rates, which are red versus the old rates, which are blue, and these are the actual dollars somebody would be paying, uh, that will come down for more than half of the households in, uh, in Manchester. The difference won't be huge. It's going to be a hundred dollars, maybe in some cases two hundred dollars a year. Uh, but not, you know, not, not enough to say, this is your reward. We're staying below the state mandated sixty-five gallons per capita, per person per day. Um, that's right, that's mandated. Once you get above those levels, the new rates will increase the bill faster than the old rates. So we've always had, um, obviously a charge per unit. We've had a slight increase in the charge per unit. I don't think you can see it in this chart. There's actually a little bend in these lines tilting upward. You can see it much more clearly in this one, which tilts upward like that. And that's a graduated or progressive rate, incremental block rate. We went to school on all of the neighboring towns, the rest of Massachusetts, and frankly, a lot of national templates and examples before we recommended this and ran lots of different models. So when we, uh, discussed this, when the select board discussed it last month, um, you asked for us to notify anyone who could conceivably see a dramatic change, significant change in their water bill. And we sent out approximately four hundred letters all to residences because we have very few commercial users and they, they'll be contacted separately. And, um, I'm happy to say we, uh, we got quite a lot of positive and curious reactions. These are the reactions and questions. It kind of in the order of, actually in the exact order of frequency. So ninety, over ninety percent of people said, yes. I'd like to participate in pilot testing smart water meters. I think this is a good idea as we combined that in the letter. Um, many people said, what are these proposed new rates? I don't, I haven't kept up. I haven't read this. I don't go to select board meetings. What, what's on tap? Um, and then third most common was a curious question, how did I end up in the top twenty percent of drinking water users? Because I don't have a very big lawn and, you know, I don't have a huge family and I try to be a conservation. So with all those people, we shared the ten-year history of water usage from the DPW's water division. And you can see the other questions here. Number five is, what else can I do? Number six is, okay, I'd like to try piloting, but will I eventually get a smart water meter even if I don't pilot? And the answer is, yes. In time, we'll, uh, the DPW will replace all the meters. Um, will the proposed rates also affect my outside irrigation meter? So if you're on town sewage, you're eligible to get a separate meter for outside use of water. Because that's not going to go back into the drains directly and into, and have to be treated in the sewage. So it, it basically removes the sewer fee from that usage. And the answer is yes, rates affect all meters. Are the sewer rates also going up? I believe so, but this not really our recommendations. You'll probably hear more about that tonight. And then more specific questions from, from individuals. I have a tenant or several tenants who are also on my water meter. This is the first I've heard of it. Have you really done your homework? Where can I find your findings at work? Isn't this really just a disguised tax increase, which will fall on larger properties that do more irrigating? And from a couple of people, what if these rates don't encourage much water conservation? So we have answers to all of these questions, but I just want to focus on the last one because obviously we have to provide information and incentives and in some case custom advice, and that's essential to the implementation phase. And I think I may stop there, although, uh, John, you probably would like to see this last comparison. John Roud has worked very closely and intensively on this and he's one of the, frankly, one of the authors of the recommendations with several of us. So this messy chart shows our neighbors, Essex, Topsfield, Marblehead, Salem, Hamilton. And this heavy dashed line in the center is our current rates as of last week or two weeks ago. And it really puts us in the middle of a pack that includes Hamilton and Marblehead and Essex in the wintertime. There's some variations here. So Essex in the summer has a very different structure. Topsfield has a much higher rate overall. And, uh, Salem has a very low, uh, non-graduated, non-progressive rate. The red dashed line is what we're proposing. So you see, it starts out lower and for more than half of the households in town, this is the relevant portion of the rate change. But for the other thirty-five or forty percent, here's the the progression up to, you know, fairly, this is very substantially usage, three hundred fifty thousand cubic feet is two, two million gallons per year, which would be more than I think any residence has ever used. So let me stop there. I'm sure there are questions and comments, um, and I'd be happy to try answering some of them. John, you might jump in and lend a hand. Is there anything you'd like to add before we, uh, we cut over to?
I just might add one thing with regard to this graphic, Steve, and that as you go out on that red line out there, the number of households that are out on that red line are in really the single digits. And Steve says thirty, forty percent. Most of those thirty or forty percent that are beyond the half that are in the very first part are really in the, the second part of that slope. They are not in the high, on, on, on the, on, on the, uh, tail end of it. So, um, those really high numbers that you're, you're looking at or could calculate are affecting really very few people. Percentage points.
Here are the, here are the gory details. We have two thousand roughly to nineteen hundred and some change households on our water system and everybody in town uses town water, even if they're not on sewer. So more than half of them, almost eleven hundred, are primarily in tier one or in tier one and tier two. Um, another six hundred and seventy in current rates go into tier three, which would become our new tier two. And then we have a hundred and forty households here and forty-five households at the very high usage level. And you see the corresponding annual bills range from about two hundred and sixty dollars to over ten thousand dollars. And what's going to happen under the proposed changes is the two hundred and sixty on average will drop about a hundred dollars to a hundred and forty. This will go up about a hundred dollars. This will go up more substantially through four hundred dollars. And for these folks, it'll be more like a forty percent increase, low thousands of dollars. Is that what you were saying, John?
Yes, yeah, I have to look at the distribution of, uh, the folks. Everybody's pretty much in the new tier one, tier two.
You can then interrupt briefly, um, because of the way our, um, camera, cameras on people overlaps your slide, it's hard to see the, um, the column on the far. The column on the far right. Could you just read those numbers?
Glad to. The column on the far right of this slide. Is the new tier four, which would have sixty. Approximately sixty households in it. They would, under our proposed rates, pay fourteen thousand six hundred dollars a year. Which is about uh forty-five hundred dollars more than they're currently paying. Now, of course, there's a distribution here. So the very, very top users residentially. Would seem more like a doubler. In their rates. Uh, because that's what's built into the rate structure and most of their usage, if they don't change their behavior, most of their usage will fall into your form.
And we should add, this is a static analysis. We're just assuming nobody changes their habits. This is the way it ends up. And really, the primary objective here is to get some conservation going. So some of those people up at the high end. Maybe use a little bit less water and wind up moving down that curve rather than. Staying up there. We are using probably, well, we're using twenty percent more water than the state would like us to use. And uh, we're certainly trying to get down to the sixty-five gallons per day. Right now, we're close to eighty gallons per person per day. On average, which puts us up very high. And we're hoping that we can move down that curve. And frankly, the people up on the top end are. Uh, in the best position to help us. Move down the curve a little bit and get down to that sixty-five level or so.
Yes, good point.
Um, could we could we bring back the um? Side pictures? Let somebody else hit the box rather than. Thank you.
So we've got a couple of hands up from virtual.
Okay, first I'm going to ask for comments from the board. Brian.
No, at this point, I think it's. I understand it.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree. We've talked about this a lot already. However, there were a couple of actions that I thought the team had taken that I'm. Not sure how they were resolved. One, you had a question about, um, you know, how do we ensure that multifamily homes on one meter are not adversely affected? Um, and the others, same thing, you know. Families, I thought we talked about some like bedroom count or something. I I just. I think we asked some questions to make sure that the right homes are falling in the correct tiers. And I'm reading the proposed policy. I don't understand that.
What that's being.
Yeah, I I just didn't see it.
Yeah, we've we've discussed that and and made some recommendations. And I think. Um, at least with DPW, there's agreement that. Um. Genuine genuine multi-units, meaning. Let's take the extreme example would be like the property on Desmond that has uh several dozen. Units in it. Those should be treated. As though they were individual units for setting the the tier, the rate. And not, so in other words, the rate should be set by the average use of each unit, not by the total use of the complex. And uh DPW is prepared to to um circulate a. Uh, a policy that would make that possible in a form so that anybody who's. Wants to take advantage of that can do it and have their. Uh, total bill recalculated at the proper rate. It gets a little bit um. Judge, uh, some judgment will be required because there are some. Multi-unit properties where. There may be, for example, a caretaker living in a separate unit. And. Um. We. Recommend that that not. Result in. Two units dividing the usage on the property. Um. In other cases, it may be an independent tenant who's paying rent and making. Her or his own decisions about water. In that case, DPW might. Um, agree to have. The uh tier level recalculated by the average. But I I think you can appreciate the the uh variety of conditions we have. We just want to make sure that particularly where we're dealing with a. A true collection of rental units. That those people don't pay a higher rate.
So I I I think that all sounds good. I just didn't see it reflected in the policy. So I think our residents reading the collateral. And not understanding that. That's planned, and I think it should be in the policy.
Yeah.
There would be some waiver process or something, whatever we're gonna do.
Here, here, in a major, yeah. Here to four, it hasn't been a major issue.
Right.
Because the increase um across usage has been very low.
Correct.
So this is an area that we're in, a problem that we're introducing with these new rates. And it's not being, it hasn't been explained, it hasn't been dealt with. And I think that the commercial users are also in that category.
Yeah, whatever the the outliers are, if you will.
Yeah.
I just think. That we have talked about doing something for them. It's not reflected in the collateral and it should be documented, whatever we're going to do. That's. That's my comment.
Yes, well said.
Okay, that's true. When you say collateral, essentially you mean the rate sheet. Cause that's really the only thing that's out there is just, hey, here are the rates.
Yeah, exactly.
And uh, in the past, we've just said, here are the rates. In fact, there's really never been much in the way of a discussion or. For Warner Peron, they've been gone up two and a half, three percent, and that has happened. And. There hasn't been any comment. This obviously is a different situation because we're looking to change our consumption patterns. So I agree, we need to codify this, those topics, both commercial as well as multi-unit types of places. They have been topics of discussion in the past couple of days. Um, and we will be dealing with all of that. We do need to codify that. Somehow. Maybe separately from the rates or I'm not, I'm not sure how to do that, or just it winds up in the minutes here.
I don't know. I don't want to step on it. Um. I'm uncomfortable. Having all of this kind of left up to the discretion of the DPW, and I would think that they would be uncomfortable with it as well. Is Chuck or?
Chuck's on there.
But we certainly could have um. Draft those guidelines and then you approve them as part of the destruction. But I don't. That's not ready for this evening.
Mm-hmm.
Um. But it's certainly something that you could do in in the near future.
Other other. Comments from the board? Um. Fine, then why don't we ask if there are comments from the live audience? Oh.
I have a question.
Um, yes.
It's based off what, I'm sorry, Eric Brown, fifty-seven.
Let yourself, but we would appreciate it.
Yes, Erica Brown, fifty-seven Brook Street, but and the cricket. Um, it's related to what you're talking about right now. If you were to. Um, reconsider the commercial users. And the commercial users, there's three of them in the top ten, I believe. Wouldn't that distort rather dramatically the data we just saw?
I don't think that the data that you saw did not include commercial users.
Okay.
This was just residential.
Yeah.
The number of commercial users is either around fifty or sixty and. It was easy to carve them out.
Thank you.
Mary. Uh, Mary Foley, one Polaski Drive. Um. Quick question, and then I'll make my. Comments question. Um, is this phase one of a three-phase? Proposal so that, you know, we're looking at. These four tiers going up just, you know, five dollars, eight dollars, fifteen, twenty. But if we get to phase three, it's. Reducing tier one to three dollars, tier two up to thirteen, thirty-six, seventy-five, and then tier four, forty-five dollars, fifty cents. So is this one of three?
Of the answer, we are, right now, we are considering only one race. We are not, but we are not adopting the whole program here, particularly the part that says it goes up every six months. But no, we are considering only the first step.
Okay, so the proposal is every six months?
No, this proposal is not every six months. The. Water resource protection task force suggested every six months, but the board of selectmen is considering only the first round.
Okay. Thank you. So, all right, so this, so my, um, and I had sent in an email earlier, I guess. Trying to analyze this and and maybe I'm looking at it wrong, but. So in some regards, it comes down to a numbers game. So if you're a household of two or one. If you're doing that calculation of sixty-five. Gallons per day times ninety-three days for the quarter. Times um. The number of people divided by the seven point four eight one, you're going to come below that. Tier. One, you're going to reach tier one. If you're getting up into a household of more people just by the numbers game, you are going to get into tier two and tier three. So. I'm trying to figure out what the goal of this is. Is it to across the board equitably? Have people conserve water? Or is it just if you're a household higher than two people conserve? Cause if you're two people, you could go up to seventy-five gallons. Um, per person per day and still be under that seventeen hundred dollar threshold. So there's no incentive there to conserve. Um, so I'm not sure we're promoting it across the board conservation. Um, and then I guess I would ask. Um, some other local communities do summer, summer. Water rates and winter water rates. And so by that, you're targeting the irrigation. Which is the uptake in the summer, if that's the goal to try to limit irrigation. Or in Essex, I think it is, they do a flat rate and then they do an excess rate in summer to to. Target that whether it's boat washing or the irrigation. So. I guess my question is, why are we? Decreasing the rate in tier one? And people can continue using the sixty-five to seventy-five gallons a day? And really only targeting tiers two, three and four? Um, and then were other options considered and why were they? Denied?
I'm going to ask John.
Yeah.
Or um. Steve, whichever.
Yeah, I can I can comment to start. The median consumer here is fifty, fifty gallons per person per day. It's low. It's certainly lower than the sixty, sixty-five, the median. That's because irrigation is such a big factor in this town. There are two things that are driving. The the restructure. One is we use too much water. Twenty percent more than what is the state has expected. And second, we use way more water in the summer than we do in the winter. Most of the towns around us, the increase of water in the summer is forty, fifty percent. For us, it's over a hundred percent. We are an outlier by far. Um. So you have to look and say, we've got to get our water consumption down by about twenty percent, or it certainly that's that's the laudable goal. And what is the smartest way to do this? And the state also has opinions on this. You could speak with Chuck and the DPW. Uh, the state regulates what goes on with water all the time, and they do not like our numbers. And when we chat with them about things that we'd like to have them do with regard to our water management. It becomes a difficult conversation because our consumption is high and our irrigation is very high. So we structured this. To go for where it's it's easiest to get the numbers down. And it's really with the irrigation at the high end because we are so much higher. Than all of the communities around us. And if we can get that down, it would be more reason, it's it's easier to do that than to go across the board. Now, we are combining this. With a program of carrots, shall we say? The the rates are really the stick. Hey, the numbers are going up for people. Uh, not for most people, but for a a number of people. But we are also going to embark on a conservation campaign to get people in general, just to save more water right across the board. So everybody is certainly going to be participating in that across the board and getting messages. From the the water task force so that the folks that will 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 follow on on that task force in the coming months. And uh, we hope that a lot of people will will heed those particular messages and that information. And conserve water in general. And right now, we we're at a hundred and fifty million gallons a year. That's what we consume. We want to get down below a hundred and twenty-five. About a hundred and twenty-five million gallons gets us to the sixty-five gallon per person per day. And right, right now, we're at eight. So that's that's why things are structured the way they are. And as Anne said, we don't have any specific plans of, if we get where we want. With the structure the way it is, we may not change that water structure at all, or maybe we'll change it in a way we don't know yet. Because we'll get feedback.
Okay, you you you've had your.
I'm sorry, I'm done.
Is there other, um, are there other questions? Yes.
Yep, Steve Paccone just commented and uh. So if we do save twenty percent of the water, what what do we do with it all? Can we save it for next year? How does that? What are, I heard we had plenty of water earlier. So I'm just curious, what do we do with all this extra water? If we have plenty, what are we going to do with the other twenty percent?
John, can I take that?
Go.
Okay. Um, it's true. Historically, we have lots of water compared to other communities, particularly compared to Hamilton. Topsfield and Ipswich and other towns that depend on the Ipswich River, which. Perennially runs dry. And in droughts, it's even worse. We're not in that uh difficult situation, and it's because more than a hundred years ago. Some of the citizens in Manchester took some very. Um, foresightful steps to acquire a big reservoir. Get the water rights to use it in perpetuity. It's in Hamilton, not in Manchester. So it was not the simplest thing to do and to buy the uh. Two hundred, three hundred acres around the reservoir to provide protection for its purity. Now, today, we are facing a new form of contamination called PFAS. I'm sure most people have heard of it. Um. It's beginning to be well understood as a really serious health risk. And the EPA has proposed extremely tight limitations on how much PFAS can show up in drinking water. Our well, which provides a third to forty percent of our drinking water. Is particularly high. Right at about the the previous maximum contamination levels, and it will be way above the new levels once they're, once they're. Uh, promulgated by the state. So we face a problem. We have all this, what we thought tremendous amount of water, but we're going to have to spend a very large amount of money. To preserve the quality, the purity, drinkability of the Lincoln Street well. Eventually, we may have to do the same thing at the at the reservoir. So what we're really talking about here is conservation to give us options. Around this otherwise enormous capital expenditure to. Try to fix PFAS.
You have a bigger problem when you have twenty percent more.
We go in a, in a, in these meetings, we do not address of our speakers. We address our question, we let the speaker finish, and then we address the question to the chair. And I gathered, Steve had had just run out of his two minutes.
Yeah, I got that.
I'm done.
And and I would be willing to. Hear your question if it's addressed to the chair.
Okay, so back to my two minutes. And Steve, thank you for taking my call today. He helped me out to understand the letter. But um. I'm still confused what we're going to do with all this. Extra water that's contaminated. So now it sounds like it's more of, you're trying to raise money so you go fix the water. So that's, I get that issue. But I guess just back to some basic stuff. I'm glad my kids have all moved out. Cause ten year history, my water stuff, my water patterns have changed dramatically. So thank God I'm a small house. So I don't know why I got the letter, but it was ten years of history, which is kind of odd. So none of the meters are accurate, I heard. Right? And so you're going to replace all the meters. You're going to have to at least replace the meters and the big users because they're going to give you a hard time. But how much does it cost to replace all the meters in town? What's a meter run?
Um.
Uh, is Chuck there? He probably is closer to that. I mean, I I know kind of estimates. Chuck, are you there?
Yeah, I'm I'm here. Um, yeah, so it, you know, generally meters are a couple hundred bucks by the time we get through the buying the meter and the install and the. Um, the MXU or the, you know, the thing that sends the data back to the user. Um, so we're, you know, anticipating that, you know, to fit out the entire town, we'll be somewhere between a million and a million and a half.
This could possibly fund others. Or did I break up another rule? I'm sorry.
Same rule.
So same same rule twice. I apologize. Um. No, I think I'm, I think I'm good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Uh, Jeff Ko Shan. Five Street. Cooley's friend. Um, what about?
To be determined.
To be determined. Uh, at times we have plenty of water and treating the water costs money. So the more money we use, the more it costs. Um, I don't know if you walk gravelly pond at all. Last year. If you walk gravelly pond, for example, last year it was down seven feet, so we don't always have plenty of water. And we need to be placed in a venue that's a man of twenty years old. And we need to be placed in any, as a matter of twenty years old.
Thank you. Are there other in-person questions? Um, Mary, I.
I just want my questions to be answered, I don't think I got an answer to the questions.
Okay, could you reset, you, you had a fair.
No, I know, I was rambling, that's why, so I guess my, the first question was. Um, the, with the tier one, the rates going down. And you can stay in that tier for two people household or one person and get these awesome rates now. What incentive is it giving to those people to conserve with the same tiers two, three, four to conserve? I don't see the incentive.
Can I take a crack at that, man?
Yes.
I, I just say that these are user fees and they're per gallon or per cubic foot. So that if you use more cubic feet, even if you're in the same tier for all that usage, you're gonna get a higher bill. Um, so there's the same incentive that exists with every consumer product or service. You use twice as much water, even if you don't move up from one tier to the next, your bill will be twice as large, so that's plenty of incentive. It's not simply the rate that the tier applies, it's the gallons, it's the usage.
Very.
Well, my second question was, um. Did you look at doing winter, winter rates and summer rates or the bump up rate in summer to target the same problem?
Yes, we modeled.
Yeah.
John can answer it too.
Um, rather than both of you smiling at each other, could you, one of you?
Yeah, we modeled, I don't know, maybe thirty different uh, options. Including uh, winter and summer rates, including drought, um, specific rate changes. Um, and there are models of these kinds of rate structures around. Uh, for us to look at and uh, maybe get some experience from, and we concluded that. Since we, we knew where the. Most likely source of conservation was going to come from, and it was irrigation, particularly very large amounts of irrigation. Um, that it didn't make a great deal of sense to make a rate change that was going to affect. All or almost all of the households, like a summer versus winter rate. Um, so when we, when we process those kinds of models, they ended up having the same kind of progressivity. That you see in the recommendations, no, no particular reason to have a distinction between summer and winter.
Um, Mary, does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
I'll make it, I'll make it quick, so if, um, if there are very few factors that drive that high end. Very few accounts, right? And those very few accounts do something very drastic to change their behavior, you get what you want. Um, they go onto private wells for their irrigation, for instance, or they adopt a technology to drive down their usage. Have you accommodated a change in that static tranches? That top twenty percent becomes a very different twenty percent. If the top, say, three percent of users change their behavior very drastically, I wanna know if that was addressed.
Uh, I guess I can, I can address that, yes. Um, that's a concern, and in fact, that's a primary driver for us discussing with the finance committee. Because if too many people decide to not use water, we get less money.
Yes.
And we're trying to make this revenue neutral. We're not interested in raising hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars through this exercise, we're interested in conserving water. But still making things revenue neutral. And um, there has been experience out there, we looked at several other communities that have done this. And we also had a consultant, Rev Tellis, who is an expert on setting water rates. And at the levels that we are at, it's pretty elastic. Sitting here a year from now or eighteen months from now, looking at where the money goes, the chances are. The consuming will go down maybe a little bit, but will wind up with more money. And we would like it to go down more, like the consumption to go down more. Now, we did look at how things would occur if, say, there was thirty percent reduction. And with these costs, or these, this, this new rate, the thirty percent conduct, uh, reduction, we still wind up with the same amount of money. Um, so. We're, we're a little bit in uncharted territory, but for the communities that we have looked at and that Rev Tellis has had experience with. And the percentage that we have gone up. We're not expecting, uh, it's, we're not expecting, uh, see financial difficulties certainly. And we're hoping that we will see a reduction in uh, in water consumption.
Thank, thank you. Jeff?
Jeff Koschen, just, there, I was just, you were surprised that, um, that the revenue. Would go, would not go down drastically, but that was thorough model, model, and. The history in all the other towns that we looked at is they don't respond.
But the goal is to, I'm sorry.
The goal is, sorry, the goal is for we, to respond, and. That's the reason you saw those other future potential rate increases that aren't on board here, is because. Unfortunately, people don't respond, so, uh, that was one response for that.
Thank you.
And may I add, add a word? Thanks, um. Looking at the experience of other communities and cities that have tried something like this. Uh, in the, certainly in the first few years. Uh, demand is, as John said, very inelastic, meaning the usage doesn't change very much, even when the price goes up very significantly. There's a little town near Cape Cod called Catuit. Which we have all the accurate data from, and not. This similar to Manchester, uh, some very large properties. And then a village center and a bit of a vacation flavor to the town. Um, they have quadrupled the uh, top tier rates. In two waves, one in two thousand nineteen and one last year in two thousand twenty-two. And they have seen no change in the overall water usage month to month, person, year on year. When we look out west at systems that have been using pricing as well as incentives and policy changes. And uh, advice and education for decades, we see that it does take time, but cumulatively. It does, it works, there are conservation steps taken by everybody, that includes the professionals involved in it, the landscapers. The uh, architects and designers.
You've got thirty seconds.
I'll stop right there, uh, but, so, uh, you know, have, have some hope, this is a, this is a long game, it's not. Conservation of water is not a, uh, one-year phenomenon.
Thank you. Um.
Unless, quickly, Steve Piccone again.
Yes.
So all you're voting on is the phase one rate?
That's correct.
Just the front page of the cricket has all the other phases.
Yep.
Okay, but all you're voting on is essentially this next fiscal year's water rate.
All we're voting on is what rates we approve tonight. We are in a position to change the rates quarterly.
Oh, okay.
We don't do it as a general thing. But. That it is, it is within the purview of the, of the sewer and water commissioners, us.
Got it, thank you.
Um. Uh, people, uh, I see Tom Keno.
Number of questions. Uh, Harris, uh, Colm Shane. Yes. That's right. Hi, how you doing, uh, Five Eaglehead Road. Um, first thing, I, it's just a point of clarification, are these rates going to be, are these marginal rates? So in other words, if, is it just your usage that falls into the tiers, not your, your household based on your usage?
Your first X. Gallons are at one rate, your next X gallons are at the next rate, um, and it is only the final. Uh, you're, when you're over the first three rates, that you return the fourth rate of that, is the amount of both that.
Got it, okay, thank you, and then, um, the other thing is just a, and a, a follow-up to, to the woman who was asking the question about the different tiers. And I, I think the point, um. That she may have been trying to make it, I'm trying, I'll make it myself, is that. What this results in is that, um, it's very pure, I'm in a similar situation to Steve Piccone where my kids have moved out, but at one point I had. Four kids living here, and this is extremely punitive to large families. I mean, by, based on the rates, I think a family of six, which is what I would have been, probably can use about a quarter. Of the water per person as a family of one or two, so what was the discussion about that?
Thank you, um, Steve, would you like to pay that?
Yeah, the tiers were set, uh, by looking hard at the sixty-five gallons per capita per day and making, using some averages. So very large families will have the problem with water that they have with everything. You wanna take them to an amusement park, you wanna buy them new clothes, it's expensive to have larger families. As, nothing we can do about that, but here, here's, here's the point. May I complete, the, the second, the first and second tiers go up to, um. A gallon per quarter level that equates to staying within the sixty-five gallons per capita per day. Even for a larger family, so. That family would have to be much more cautious about watering the lawn, washing cars and filling a swimming pool. Um, than a smaller family would be, but we designed it so that it's still. It should still be a reasonable choice for people to make, that they can continue to wash clothes, dishes. Prepare meals, take showers, um, even if there's five or seven people in the household. Uh, without getting into tier three. As long as they stay away from heavy outdoor use.
Okay, but, yes, so that doesn't, I mean, unless, unless the rates are determined. By taking into account the number of people living in the household, then that statement is not true. Because the fact is that if you have six people in a household. They have to use significantly less per person than a one household. A one-person household or two-person, two-person household, that's just math. So it's extremely punitive to large families. And I'm curious whether that was taken into account. That's just the facts.
I can, I can comment.
Yes.
Okay. If you look at tier, uh, the new tier two. The new tier two, you would not get out the, the tier two for somebody using sixty-five gallons per day. Which is the state expected number and having six people using sixty-five gallons per day, you're still in tier two. So when you say punitive, I think that's a very strong term. I say you really have to go well out on the, on the curve before it becomes along, along those lines. I would say somebody who is in that particular category, their bill will probably go up fifteen percent, twenty percent. From where it is right now, which is not, which is not a great, it was gonna go up two and a half percent anyway if we had, if we had stayed where we are. But it's very difficult, and we've read some articles about some towns that have tried to say, they've gone to every particular household and said, how many people have you got? And then you already got the kids away at school during the year and college, and then they come back, and I, I mean, there are so many variables. That are involved in something like that, it was very difficult for the uh, town, this is a town in California to try and, and manage that. So, uh, virtually everybody kind of works by household and households are pretty fluid in terms of. The number of people they have, especially as kids get older.
Thank you, that, that's helpful about the, say, calibrating it to, to uh, six people for the tier two, that's helpful, thank you. Eli Bolin is next?
Yes. Eli, please. Unmute yourself.
Howdy, folks. Um, so I have uh, three or four points, first of all, I totally support the um, benefit tiers, the lower two tiers, the reduction in cost. Um, uh, over the years, those people have been exemplary in their um. Water conservation, and I think that they should um, be given some benefit, they include uh, smaller retired households. And uh, so I think that is perfectly reasonable, and I think that, um, as was just pointed out, large families won't really suffer very much. Um, we have been year over year increasing water and sewer rates four percent. Um, just to keep our infrastructure intact, so I, I totally support those changes. Um, I have um, a concern about the. Uh, upper two tiers, first, the um, the upper tier, I don't think it's gonna make a dent at all in water conservation. Um, we went through this uh, several years ago, the people up there have enormous sums of money. Um, the peak water user has three water lines running to his or her, or their property. To um, support their water usage, which peaks out at something like twelve thousand gallons per day during the peak months. They have enough money that they are simply not going to care about the, the water rates that you set. Um, so I don't think that upper tier is actually going to significantly go into effect anything, um, and knowing the, um. Uh. Well, I, I don't think the, um, I, I don't mean to be cynical, but I don't think there's gonna be a lot of effect from, um. Uh, changing the um, philosophy of those people. The concern that I have is that in the lower, the third tier. Um, where you actually might see conservation efforts. Um, be effective, you have probably captured a category of things that you have not talked about in this meeting, which is businesses and schools. And I know that early on you said, uh, households only were captured in the data provided. Um, and you said the businesses would be attracted, uh, um, dealt with separately, last time we dealt with this. We made a conscious effort to go and talk to the businesses and address them early in the process, so I'm a little concerned.
Could you please, you, you are well over your two minutes, could you just? You didn't have the thirty seconds, cause you're Eli, but.
All right, um, uh, last two comments, if you could address these, so, uh, this is institutional knowledge, which I think you'll benefit from. Past abatements, um, when we last raised the water rates, there were two abating requests made for um, apartments. One at the Summer Street. Um. Uh, development and one at a Phillyus apartment development. Where we both approved water rate, uh, abatements where they would be divided by the number of the residents, those places, now we've done two separate board meetings. Um, and then the last thing is, there is one last benefit of um, water, the electric, uh, electronic, um, the new water meters. And that is, um, uh, people who have leaks can be notified immediately if they have leaks. And that's a, a small point, but I think a valuable point if you're trying to promote this, thank you.
Thank you very much, um, thank you for your thoughtful comments, um. Steve, John, do you have anything?
Nothing more to add at this point.
Okay. Um.
So Christina?
Okay. Um, unmute yourself, can. Ready for conversation? Okay.
They're unmuted, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Oh, good, I'm sorry, I was driving and I did pull over a minute ago, all right, so I am having a public policy issue with this, I just feel. Yeah, oh, I'm so sorry, Christina Delucio, sorry, sorry, um, so I guess. To me, if you're a family of one, two or five, I mean, your usage is sixty-five gallons a day, and that's what the state dictates. But you're being penalized and you're being discriminated, discriminated against if you have more than two people in your household. We're in a situation with our schools that we're trying to cha, attract families. And we just said the exact opposite, well, if you wanna have children, you're gonna have to pay more, but. This doesn't seem, there should be a point at where, you know, our census captures how many people are in our households, and that should be, my household is five. Then I'm allotted sixty-five times five, and that should be my number, I don't see where this number puts me at tier two. And even if I am at tier two, I am being penalized for having a family of more than two. And additionally, I don't water my lawn, I have a garden, so I don't see what number is reasonable than to grow food. So now we're being discouraged not to have children, not to grow food. And when I did redo my house ten years ago, I spoke to the state about energy conservation, and they suggested that we use a tankless hot water heater. And at that time, it was known that I would use more water than, you know, energy, because I'm not keeping the water hot, but now. This is going to in turn penalize my household because we. But now, this is going to in turn penalize my household because we do have this extra water waiting for. The hot water to reach the shower head. So I don't think saying, you know, a large family should be penalized. I don't think drinking water, showering, clothes, washing clothes. Is a luxury. I think these are necessities of life and to say that any household of more than two is not going to be, is not penalized. With a higher rate is actually false. I'm not sure how we can say this with a straight face. Um. And how are we capturing irrigation versus household water? Is there a different rate or not? So what was the purpose of having two different lines if you're now going to be penalized for using it as such? Thank you.
Um, I can answer the first, the last part. Um, the reason for having two lines, one for irrigation and one for. Of domestic water is that you're charged your sewer bill based on the use of domestic water. And not on the use of irrigation water. Um, and that was to make, to reflect the fact that that irrigation does not go into the sewer system. So it was not to make two classes of water and when considering your water rates, the two. Both the irrigation and the domestic are added together to figure out what tier you're in. And I will leave it to John and um Steve to talk about the discrimination against large families and gardens.
Yeah, thanks. And I just a piece of context here, the current population of Manchester, I believe, is fifty-four hundred, fifty-five hundred citizens. Is that correct?
Great.
And we have two thousand households um on the water system. So I I, my first question is, how many large households do we in fact have versus small ones? I'm sure there are many, but I'm not. I don't know the exact number. I I'm just a question of relevance here. Not to, not to uh. Demean or criticize Ms. Delisio's comments because. There are clearly some households of five, six and more people. But not many is my point. John, did you want to add?
No, I I I mean, I agree that the the head count is, the average household is not very large here in town. There are an awful lot of houses. That have just uh, just two people. And the number of houses that have six or seven residents, it's got to be very, very few, I would think. But still, to stay within tier one, um, the consumption here for the median. Individual is well below sixty-five gallons per day per person. It's closer, closer to fifty. So we're already. Fairly conservative in the way we approach it. It's just that there's a tremendous amount of irrigation. That's why it drags our average up. Our uh, our average up to close to eighty. But the median is is closer to fifty. And at that level, a family of four or five isn't going to get out of tier one.
You know, John, John is right, if I may add, just. That point, the majority, if you take the majority of households at the low end. The average daily use per capita, assuming that they are two and a half people per household, is under thirty gallons per day. Just to give you an idea, and I don't think those people are skimping on. Hygiene and dishwashing and staying hydrated. So sixty-five gallons per day is set as a ceiling by the state, a maximum. Um, very consciously to allow for larger families, to allow for more frequent. Use of domestic water and to allow a little bit of outdoor water use. It's not a, it's not a punitive level at all. And and I encourage anybody who's. Curious about this to try out one of the water use calculators on the internet. Because it'll very quickly, you answer about fifteen questions about how your house is set up and what your habits are. Um, of washing and and cooking and whatnot. And uh, you'll get. Some information about what you could be doing if you were really conserving versus where you may be today.
Thank you.
Right.
Yep, uh, Dana. He's he's next in line.
Okay. Fun.
Um.
Yeah.
Dana Vermily on School Street in Manchester. Uh, first of all, I'd like to commend the goals of the task force and I know that a tremendous amount of thought and work went into this. And one suggestion to further the goal of targeting excessive use is that. Tier three is very large. It is a range of thirty thousand gallons to a hundred and twenty thousand gallons. So it goes from people who are just a little bit over the average usage and not doing a lot of irrigation. To people who are four times average the usage. And uh, so I think, and there could be very legitimate reasons why someone is slightly over the average. Household size, kids on sports teams, you name it. Um, so I would suggest that that tier three. Be higher at its starting point to allow for some legitimate reasons why somebody might be slightly over the average usage.
If, if, if I may, um. Somebody who's just slightly over out of tier two and into tier three is paying for a very few gallons. At the tier three price. So it's not that you suddenly get your whole bill moved up a tier.
I do realize that it is the marginal rate, but it is such a substantial increase. It's two point five times the. The uh rate below that it it can add up quite quickly. Um, so. It it can impact people, particularly in today's inflation, people trying to save money. I I um. I just think you're lumping together people with slightly over average usage with people that have very. Are that the probability of their doing irrigation is a lot higher.
Steve, I know has a slide that uh shows the number of people that would in theory be in that group. It's pretty small.
Uh, let me find that.
Hundred households or something?
It's a two hundred and fifty-five.
Okay, two fifty-five.
Yeah.
Yeah. So those people who are in tier three though. They will also benefit from the reduction in the rate, your tier one water usage, correct?
And and tier two.
And tier two. So I just think we need to keep that in mind. Everyone, everyone is getting a discount. On the, on the first two tiers. And it's only the marginal. Additional gallons over tier two that are. Realizing the higher rates. The delta, I think is going to be very. Yeah, uh, some of that may be absorbed by the savings in the lower rates.
Some of it maybe, but again, I I think it's, it's just in terms of equity, putting thirty thousand people in with a hundred and twenty thousand people is something to consider.
Thank you. Um.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, Tom Keough, twenty Lincoln Street. I think what we need to do is we need to keep in mind that uh, the, one of the. One of the uh, goals of the Water Protection Resource, Resource Protection Task Force was to keep water available for the future. Um, Chairman Gang talked about that early on in terms of uh, the people who were the Water and Sewer Commissioners back in the eighteen nineties. Uh, making some decisions to get water for us. Water is a uh, is a resource that is uh, difficult to monitor. We can measure it, but we never know when we're not going to get it like last summer. And the only thing we were looking at was the drought monitors. And this summer, and the only thing we're looking at is roads that are washed out in our state and other states around here. As we get, you know, one, two or three inches of rain in the day. Um, I'd also like people to think that um, as was just mentioned by uh, Select and Belada that. Um, you think about the summer irrigation, the summer irrigation part probably is about one and one. One and one-half of the quarters that uh, people are billed for. So therefore, those people automatically, because if their irrigation is off for a lot of the time. Many of them will wind up being in tier two or in tier three. Because they won't be using the water, whether it be for irrigating their lawns or watering their flower gardens or their vegetable gardens. I just wanted to bring up a couple of things about meter replacement. The last time the Board of Select, yes.
So you know, you had ten seconds, but again.
All right, I'll go fast.
The town father of uh, Americas.
Thank you. So the last time we did meter replacement, it was two to three years. Uh, for that to happen, it didn't happen all at once and that happened fifteen to eighteen years ago when we started that. Plan. Um, so it is something that is important to get started. And as people have already mentioned, you have um, a way to keep track of your water right on your smartwatch. And the last thing I'll mention for people who've been in town for a long time, it's Lucky Walter Wilworth. With his family of fifteen living in one house is in here talking to us tonight about water usage.
Thank you, Tom. Uh. Uh, Chris Glass, Chris Glass.
Hi, Chris Glass, twelve Woodcrest Road. Can you guys hear me okay?
Mm-hmm.
Um, Chris Glass, twelve Woodcrest Road. I'm a family of seven, so I am one of the big. Consumers and big families here in town. And my concern is that um, this will be a big penalty on. People with not just big families, but families. Um, the data that we would all still be in tier one. Uh, I I I just don't buy that. And I've received the, the letter from the task force also saying that I'm in one of the top tiers. Also, I'd like to point out, we don't own a swimming pool and we don't irrigate. Um, this is just day-to-day. Three loads of laundry, multiple dishwasher runs a day and kids coming in from sports. So. I really feel like this um, does not address the fact that. Uh, people with families are going to be penalized with these, with these big water increases if you're up in tier three, which. You know, I I I see anybody with a family of even four is going to be up in tier two, tier three um, automatically. So. Um, I'd also like to point out on my street, I am one of two households with kids. So out of thirteen households, there are two with kids. Everyone else is sixty-five and older. Um, their usage is very different. They're hardly even here in the winter time. First of all, they're usually off uh, warm weather places. And um, so their overall usage is going to be completely different from somebody who is here three hundred and sixty-five days a year. With kids going to school, going to the beach, things like that. Um. So that's just a point I wanted to make. I would like going forward for the um, Select Board. To not vote on anything that doesn't take into account the census number of people in the house. And the ability to make an adjustment based on that census. So uh, thank you for your time and I appreciate it.
Um, you had done a calculation recently about. What tier a family of four would be in if they used sixty-five gallons a day.
If that, they come up with about ninety-five thousand gallons a year. About ninety or ninety-five thousand gallons a year.
Twenty-five per quarter, on an even.
Is it about twenty-five per quarter?
If it's even, it's probably more like fifty, fifty in the summer.
Per quarter and not.
That's correct. These numbers are all per quarter. Yeah. So, so that person, that person would be uh, in tier three, fully in tier three. Well, not fully, but.
If it's, if it's twenty-five thousand uh, gallons per quarter, they are entirely in.
Or one and two.
One and two.
That's correct. That's what I mean. I'm sorry. Yes. I'm looking at the top line, not the bottom. Tier three became tier two.
Yeah, that's, that's by intent.
No.
Okay, apparently from what I'm hearing, not everyone was aware that these numbers are per quarter and not per year. And if that changes your calculations, maybe it will make you feel better. Um, are there any other?
Uh, yes, we have Bill Cross.
Okay.
Hi, Ellen Cross, actually, um, at thirty-one Smith Point Road. And uh, I want to thank. The Water Resource uh, Task Force for all the work they've done. It's really helpful to have this information. But my question actually is a quarterly question. We get our bills quarterly. And it's very hard to change behavior if you don't have the information. Information is power. And when you're comparing first quarter bill to a third quarter bill, the usage can be really different. And it's hard to compare and change your behavior. When it's done in a way that you don't really understand what you did a year ago compared to this year for that same timeframe. In other words, if you have an irrigation system and there's a leak. Sometimes you don't know you've had the leak until you get the bill and it's so much bigger than it was before. And you might not even know it was bigger because you can't find that bill from three quarters ago to compare. So I wonder if there's a way that they'll be providing a different way of providing information on the bills going forward.
Um, thank you. I think, Rose, I I will let Steve answer that just because this is Steve's show.
Thanks. Well, this is ultimately up to the uh. DPW folks and the Water Division in particular. But the task force did recommend early on switching to. Uh, billing in gallons instead of cubic feet. And I think that that now appears as an addendum in the bills. Um, but beyond that, um. We certainly shared a vision of something like what you get from National Grid or other utility providers. Which furnishes a history of your usage that's, that allows you to compare year to year. And in some cases even furnishes uh. Uh. Standards from neighbors or properties similar to yours, all to help you understand. You know, are you a heavy user, a light user? Is there other things you should be doing? Um, as you say, Ellen, information is power and and in this case, um, the more. Kind of steady dose of that kind of information we can send to households, probably the better.
Thank you. Um, Jeff.
Um, also sign up for the Smart Meter Trial and. I'm quite confident that in the next couple of years, those will be with everyone. That's what I expect and. You'll see your daily usage, your fifteen-minute.
Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, Ellen's comment addresses, is is directly addressed by the Smart Meter, the shift of the Smart Meters. And Ellen, if you haven't signed up to be uh, on the pilot, you sound like the type of person that would. Would would be interested because you you then get real-time information on what your water consumption is. And I agree that the bills right now, they come so late after the fact, you can't adjust your. Your, your, your consumption habits based upon what you're getting in the mail. But the Smart Meters will give you real-time data on what's going on. And of course, along with that, if there are leaks as well, you'll know that. Right off the bat, so.
Sarah Pierce?
Yes. Sarah, please.
Hi, yes, thank you. Sarah Pierce, nine Front Street. I just, I guess, had a question for Steve Gang and also the Select Board. Um, there was a mention of PFOS in our water, our drinking water, and then also. The mention of hydrating. Does the Select Board and do you, Steve Gang, think it is safe to hydrate with water that is contaminated with PFOS? That's one question.
Um, let, uh, thank you. I will come back to you if you have another question, but. Steve.
Yes.
Um.
This is a complicated issue.
For myself, I drink the water.
Um, so do I. I, it's complicated because of the.
Dangerous to our inhabitants.
Yeah, and you should understand that they are longstanding. They were introduced in the fifties. I think the first successful one was Teflon. But now there are thousands of compounds in this family we call PFAS. And um, very uh, little, historically very little. Um, medical or epidemiological. Research and facts about them. They're not regulated by the FDA. They're simply industrial. Chemicals, uh, but they are used very widely, as you probably know. They, you'll find them in cosmetics. Any kind of waterproof sunscreen or bug repellent, uh, fast food packaging, microwave popcorn packages, dental floss. Paint, um, artificial turf up to a certain point, um. Many, many other uses. I think. My takeaway as a layman, reading a great deal of the available science and the EPA findings about this. Is that the EPA is justified in being very apprehensive about these chemicals and how widespread they are. They're measurable in the rainfall, you know, throughout the United States, they're measurable and virtually everybody's blood. They're measurable in the rainfall, you know, throughout the United States, they're measurable in virtually everybody's blood serum levels. And for myself, um infants and pregnant women should be diligent in avoiding them. So drinking water that comes through a certified uh granulated activated carbon or reverse osmosis filter, which you can buy for your home uh on the countertop or in the refrigerator or down in your basement for the whole house. Um, and ultimately, I think all public water systems will will comply with extremely tight levels, maximum levels of this contaminant, but we're not there today.
Thank you.
I I summarize it quickly, I think that uh our PFAS levels in this town are closely monitored and within guidelines, and you're ahead of the game in comparing ourselves to filter them out in the coming years.
I agree. You don't know Sarah have another question?
Sarah, you had you had another question.
Um, well, I just wanna make sure that I was getting like correct information back from the town, that you do think that town supplied drinking water is safe to drink, so not if you're pregnant. Or I'm I'm a little confused on that, but if.
I think maybe that question should have gone to Chuck Downe or everything.
Well, I guess there's just been a lot of mention about PFAS, and it's very confusing to the public whether the just the water that comes out of our tap, we don't drink the water that comes out of our tap water, we get water delivered, whether that's any better or not, I I don't test it regularly, but I just think that the public should know. I mean, we can say what we know, but I don't know what the actual reports are, we're not given information on a regular basis.
Excuse me, um, the right person to address that to is is the head of the DPW, who does the testing and knows the sinus.
Okay.
And and.
And then I did have one, just one more question, if we were, I I heard mention, I wasn't on the earlier part of this call, but I did hear mention of putting public bathrooms down at the park or to the right of the park, and wondered how is that going to help in conserving water usage in the town?
If I understand your correct question, um you were asking whether having public restrooms downtown for um people who were shopping, um going to the beach, whatever, how that will affect the water consumption overall in town, is that a summary of your question?
Correct, yep.
Okay. Um.
I I don't remember it being brought up as a topic earlier in this discussion.
Well, not maybe in this discussion, but I've heard talk about that happening.
Not back and forth with John.
Okay, well, um, obviously, there's more water involved if and when something like that is constructed. Um, I don't I don't see that affecting a hundred and fifty million gallons a year that we need to have issues with that unless there's a leak or some sort of abuse with the with the installation. But I I'm I'm not, I don't think that's a significant uh concern, given the volume of water that's consumed and the number of people in town.
Okay, I just thought with the main concern of conserving water, that that we wouldn't be adding using water.
Uh, okay, um I'm just going to say that that at a gallon of flush, it's gonna take an awful lot of courage to affect our water use.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, I appreciate your sincere response.
Um, all right. I don't have a question, it's just my comment based on that exchange, which I just. Um, the FDA does not test for PFAS in bottled water at all, there is no regulation for bottles of water or commercial water that is available. However, municipal water in cities is subject to a hundred times more testing than bottled water, and that is a absolute fact, and that's in the cities, in the rural areas, it's slightly less than a hundred times. But it's FDA bottled water is not tested for PFAS and not reported out.
And that's exactly what I said, Erica, I was not sure what was in our bottled water, thank you.
Is.
Um, Harris, the commotion has kind of begun.
Hi, thank you, Yep, Harris Comanche in five Eaglehead again. Um, so just a question on the approval, so if you vote to approve this, is it then approved, and then when would it take effect?
The the proposal is for this immediate quarter, that is to say, it's it is proposed as a retroactive rate. Well, for seventeen days retroactive.
If it's meant to be an incentive, why would you make it retroactive?
Because we didn't get to it in time.
Okay, but then shouldn't it take effect in the next quarter? So that people can actually adjust their usage?
I think that's a very good suggestion.
Thank you.
You wanna comment on that, Steve?
Yes, we're we're a couple of weeks into the quarter, which of course has twelve weeks in it, and we've experienced mainly rainy weather, so I don't think it's inconsistent with the purposes of the uh the conservation intent of these new rates to put them in effect retroactive to July first. Although if the Select Board preferred, they could be effective tomorrow. And and we put uh DPW through some tremendous, jumping through some tremendous hoops to implement that. But it they they are largely aimed at behavior during the months of May through October, so that if you don't enact them this quarter, uh effective this quarter, uh you might as well wait a year. They're, you know, they're not, the rates themselves are are primarily aimed at outside use of water, which pretty much ceases by November.
Uh, Donna First.
Yeah.
We're now way over.
Hey, sorry, this is uh Philip Fers, and I'm and I'm using her phone, so Eight Blossom Lane, and I actually I wanna circle back around to comment that Mary Foley made, which I think was too too look not addressed fully or addressed adequately. And I think it basically comes back, like, first of all, thank you for all the work you guys have done on the Water Committee. And we really appreciate, obviously, the idea to reduce water consumption, I get it, and I think that will be the effect. By the same token, I think the basic premise, like Steve, when Steve, when your opening comments, I think, is fundamentally flawed, so I think then it's 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 skews the how the conversation or how the the setup is, you know, that you guys have devised works, so the concept that just because that you that you're in tier one is makes you efficient is is incorrect, that doesn't make you efficient, that just makes you, you, based on your footprint, you have less consumption. Efficiency has to do with usage per person. So the easiest way to understand it is what Mary was getting at, was usage you know, on a per household, per person basis, right, so take the example, I've got six people, if I use the Massachusetts recommended gallons per day of sixty-five, three sixty-five days a year, I convert that to the the met, um, using the cubic feet per, uh you know, per metric, whatever, that translates into like a four thousand plus uh recommended, that puts me on tier three, and I'm doing exactly what Massachusetts, which I, for now, I'm only gonna assume that's a reasonable assumption.
May I interrupt you quickly? That is not an annual rate, that's a quarterly rate.
Yeah, totally, yeah.
Yep, absolutely, I could, I absolutely, and I converted it to quarters, so that puts me.
And there's that conversion.
No, no, so I did the conversion, that puts me at roughly four thousand, if you want to be four thousand seven hundred fifty-seven, using the mass per quarter, which puts me in a penalized state where my rate on the under the phase structure goes up four and a half X. Now compare that to a single person household. Same thing, let's start with the premise that they use sixty-five gallons per day, just like me. They end up doing the same conversion around seven hundred uh in tier one. Now, so basically now they can go up to to, they could use actually close to a hundred and fifty gallons per day and still be rewarded and be in tier one. So they get one person being massively efficient, being inefficient on a per person basis and be rewarded. So this concept that just because you have a smaller footprint, therefore you're efficient is, that's that's flat out wrong, now you could debate the merits, say you wanna tax people more because they use more, but it's not a measure of efficiency, that's point one. But that then brings me to point two, it's double taxation in a sense, you already capture people with higher households um usage in terms of taxes via the property tax, so if you make the assumption, which is absolutely fair assumption, that first of all, larger households are gonna have more generally more people, more people are gonna use more water, you're already taxing this on the property tax rate on on our footprint. So if you assume what I just said, you're already getting extra money that feeds back into the town that we're paying for services. So I'm getting taxed twice, once for my larger house, which is fine, and again, because I have more people, but you've already gotten that money. So again, it's nothing to do with efficiency, what you're doing, you're just doing it, so actually, the now leaves me with.
Way over two minutes.
That may be, but I'm very accurate, so it's important to draw this out, so let me finish my point. And the third third point is, you actually, um you're disincentivizing, you're trying to get more people or younger families to move in this town, all else being equal, you're just penalizing people that have young and growing families, you actually are trying to shrink your household, all else being equal, which makes no sense either with what you guys have stayed, you're trying to do. And then finally, the concept that you jump from these, I understand why you reduced the tiers, but the fact that you can be ma- efficient at four hundred and, you know, four thousand gallons per year, whatever it is per quarter, I should say, like I said, with a family of six, be adhere to the Massachusetts rule and be penalized, and you're still on the same penalty scale that you are at sixteen thousand per quarter on the phased basis, it'd be four and a half times more than what you guys have stayed, is absurd, like, you've gotta make more tiers than that. That that range is way too to way too wide, because you're you're penalizing it, it's absurd. All right, so I'm finished, that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um.
By way of response, I would only say, I wish, Philip, that you had stepped up and been involved in the task force, we've been diligent about all of the issues you raised for the past eighteen months, we've had twenty volunteers, including engineers, chemists, biologists, data scientists. It's among, I I ran multimillion dollar projects for Boston Consulting Group, and this one rivals any of those in terms of the depth, the quality of uh work and the commitment of the members of the team, um it's it's late in the process to uh
Late, late in the process.
These kinds of changes.
Late in the process, because you have a bad pro- uh outcome doesn't mean you implement a bad, bad outcome or an inefficient outcome.
Um.
That doesn't justify doing, you don't make a bad decision because you're deep into a process. That's the base, that's actually the basic premise of any organizational behavior study ever done about what's gone wrong, it's like, well, we're too deep, we can't change it now. That's the definition of inefficiency right there. I mean, I don't disagree, look, thank you very much for your point, your work, but that's not right, that's just not a reason not to go forward.
Um, I think at this point um I would take a motion to close the public hearing.
Um, uh, may I make a last comment here, this is Lorraine Iavani, twenty A Pine Street.
If it's very quick.
It it will be quick, um, I posed this question to the um the group that did um all of this study, and thank you very much for doing that. Has any um thought been given to rebates? You know, a lot of um communities do uh an analysis of each household, and you have water heater rebates, um, you know, turf replacement rebate programs for, you know, uh the land surrounding their homes, rain barrels, any other type of thing, washing machines, dishwashers, energy efficient types of water saving appliances. It just seems to me that we're all very cognizant of these things, and it doesn't mean that we shouldn't conserve, we should. But I think that um I didn't hear anything about, um, you know, I hear a lot about uh families feeling that they're penalized, but how about looking at families that um have taken necessary steps? And also, maybe the town could give a rebate to to folks to change their behavior, not to, in other words, change the dynamic from.
Thank you, Lorraine. One of the things that we made fairly clear is that the tiers do give people an incentive to conserve, because the more you conserve um the less you.
I I realize that, but I um just to take it to another level, um that's all I'm saying, that um the town itself might want to, for those people, like some of the electric companies, um they say, yeah, you're doing a great job, and guess what? We're gonna, you know, reduce your, you know, um whatever you pay, or give you a re- I I, look, I'm just throwing it out there, I don't have an answer on this, I do appreciate it.
Chair, may I?
Thank you very much.
May I respond very quickly?
Mm-hmm.
Lorraine, you're you're spot on, and it's one of the reasons that we uh are recommending and the Select Board is considering a tier one, which reduces the per gallon or per cubic foot rate, and will generate, we think, a one hundred to two hundred and fifty dollars savings for close to sixty percent of the households in Manchester. And if that's not a rebate program, I don't know what else you could call it. So we 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 agree a hundred percent, and we're trying to put your recommendation into into action.
That's a good way of uh, you know, fashioning it, thank you, thank you.
We
Yeah.
We haven't talked much about it, but um that's part of the education thing, that's part of this whole effort, rain barrels are already happening at a discounted rate. Uh, and uh we've talked about a review like the Mass Save Electric Program for Water.
Okay, um, now, I think I have a motion and a second um to close the public hearing, um. Uh, just the committee ready to vote?
Yes.
And Brian, what, how is, yes? Kathy, yes. Anne says yes.
Yes.
John says yes. Now, we get to do a certain amount of discussion among ourselves before we vote on the actual proposal. And um, some of the things that have come up even early on were how how does this handle multi-family? Um, and it isn't in the proposal. How do we handle commercial users? Hasn't been a problem in the past, but um with the much higher rate for higher consumption, it will be an issue for our commercial users. And nothing's been said about the schools. Um, how are we going to charge the schools for their water? And.
Do we charge them now, I don't, is that a government entity that?
Yes, because it's.
Okay.
It's regional.
It's a regional.
Yep.
Okay.
Um, how quickly could we get answers to those questions?
Well, in terms of the multi-family growing, that's that's a pretty easy one. Uh, the commercial rates, if you want a separate structure for commercial establishments, that's a little more involved. It would take a little more uh development on an alternative structure.
What can we?
Where you can keep existing, you can keep the existing structure, do a simple three percent increase and.
Right, that's that's what I'm asking.
Use that, that that would be a simple solution without tinkering really with with what we already have.
Okay, are you suggesting that we now ignore the Water Resource Protection Task Force recommendation and approve uh two and a half, two and a half percent increase in water, the annual price of water using current?
I was responding to Kathy's response, uh concern about commercial, you do that just for commercial if you wanted to.
So I I I guess my question is, we have we have talked for many months about residential. I think the team has done an extraordinary job modeling residential and and I think moving forward with residential uh rate structure, and then having a waiver process to deal with some of the um Uh, rate structure and then having a waiver process to deal with some of the um. Uh, edge cases, if you will, um, is a fair way of proceeding. However. Have we not modeled commercial that would bother me to implement a new rate structure on something that has not been modeled? So that's my question.
So I don't believe that modeling has been done.
Okay. So would it be possible to easily, like you said, what what was the rate increase last year, two and a half percent?
It's two and a half or three, I have to.
You know, I I don't, I don't want to delay making a change in the residential rates unnecessarily. However, I am not comfortable approving um, something that could greatly impact our businesses without the modeling. So I'm proposing that we move forward with a residential rate change. And then on the commercial side, I will give suggestions if we, you know, can just keep the structure. What what's, what's easiest to to do?
Yeah, the easiest way is to keep the existing structure for commercial with a small increase to to adjust for the overall budget. So the overall budget is is up two and a half percent. So we would normally, if we weren't doing any rate structure, we would be. Recommending, just like we are on the sewer sides, recommending a two and a half percent increase to the rates.
Would that be difficult for Chuck to implement?
No.
Having run a rated service before, I I wanted to ask the question because, and I I do um.
Even even if we had to do it manually, it's 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 a tall enough seconds. It's seventy-three accounts, I think. So it's not, it's another unwieldy.
Brian?
Me or Harrison?
Uh, you're not showing on your pens.
I yeah, I hear what some of the larger households are saying. Okay, and um. I had tweets. Not for, uh, and I I hear what they're saying. I do understand. I don't know if it's lost in the fact that from the first. That it's it's going to be a stepped usage. Okay, they're not going to be, uh, the whole, they're not going to be built at tier three until they get to tier three. So the savings that they uh, recognize while they're still in the step, uh, stairs one and two. Uh, it's not going to be significant. I'm just, I just, I hear what they're saying. I'm I'm conflicted and. Uh, I wish in hindsight, we'd done a little more homework in that regard. But I, I'm I'm that, I I am satisfied that to the point where. The system itself is stepped and that the savings will be realized at the beginning. Uh, to be uh, spread out over the entire course of the uh, the quarter.
If I may just address my concern. So the proposed tier two. Is currently at, you know, four thousand, four hundred, I'm sorry, four thousand cubic feet. If you up that to sixty-five hundred cubic feet, that would accommodate a family of eight and still be in tier two at the sixty-five gallons per person. So that that's a small tweaking.
No, and I I appreciate that. And again, this.
It would capture, you would keep, you would keep those larger families in tier two.
And then when they do spill over into tier three, they'll, they'll have realized the savings while they're still in the tier one and tier two kind of thing.
Okay, at this point, I don't know what, I don't have something in front of me.
In your package?
I have in my package and it's in gallons.
It's on, it's on gallons on one side and and cubic feet on the other.
And so I was putting it in the wrong direction. So you're suggesting that we. Changed tier two. From four thousand cubic feet. To.
Sixty-five hundred.
Sixty-five hundred.
Comes very close to capturing a family of eight.
I'm good with that.
And that goes from currently seven dollars and thirty cents per cubic foot to eight dollars.
I'm good.
Hey, I mean, I, um, I'm just trying to figure out. So so that's a family of eight at sixty-five, at the sixty-five gallons per person per day. Which is not what happens in Manchester. Manchester's median number is. Yes, I understand.
Awesome large.
Yes, there are some large families, but I think in general, most people are not at the sixty-five gallon per day per person consumption. I think in this town is probably a little bit less.
Well, I wanted to speak to that. I'm, I'm trying to go to the, okay, we've heard, I, it's the two or three families that spoke were talking about a lot of athletes in those families. Okay, a lot of showers. Okay, there's all, a lot of uniforms that have to be washed. Okay, there's probably a dog in there at some point too. Alright, so um, as I'm, I'm, I'm comforted, okay, with that, uh, with that change right there.
So, uh, one more question. So um, you know, we we do typically change these rates annually, right? But we, to your point, we don't have to. We can, I I, any type of big change like this is difficult, right? Whatever we do, whatever type of change we implement tonight, I would suggest we come back, you know, ask the GPW to present to us. The data as to what happened the last quarter. So let's, let's revisit. With real data, what was the impact of whatever decision we make tonight?
To that end, I, I am sympathetic to concerns about it being implemented immediately. I, I think. I I know that a lot of people won't change behavior, but maybe people do. If I was presented with it, I would, I would want the time to be able to correct my behavior if I wanted to. And I think, I don't, I don't think we're giving people enough time to correct their behavior if they want to.
Well, here's, so if the behavior we're really trying to correct is irrigation. Quite frankly, given the amount of rain we've had the past two weeks.
But I can't tell you what's going to happen.
Perfect. No.
I just don't know what's going to happen at all, I guess.
Well.
You know, it's, I don't have that crystal ball, so.
Well, um, uh, you know, to the point of doing it now or delaying it. Challenge is, we've heard from a number of people tonight, but there are several hundred people that are in this so-called twenty percent. And the twenty percent was the people that would fall into tier three and tier four. And there are hundreds of them that we have not. And a lot of those people aren't going to pay any attention until they open a bill. And they see what the story is. And the sooner they open a bill and find out, the sooner we can. Start to start to foster some changes. If you don't do that and you and you delay it, those people again, until they wait. We're going to have to wait for the next bill before they open it.
Would it be possible to send out bills? With a recurrent rate and here is what. The proposed rates would do so that.
We, yeah, we talked about that once.
And 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 so I'm, I am very concerned about. I'm very concerned about a couple of things. One is that I've heard that you were doing this for conservation. And we're doing, and a conservation concern is the very large users and the very large users are going to change their behavior. So I don't see, I'm I'm having a problem with the whole lot. I've also heard that it's not going to change our um, incomes for the water enterprise. And that it's going to produce a lot of money and we're going to get a little bit for the feedbacks to people within. And I'm having trouble with those comments. And yes, I did hear Steve say that. And. This is, this is bothering me. It's also bothering me that that, as I said, people have. No chance to fix, even even to make simple fixes like like wanting to rip irrigation. Um, before they get a huge bill. And frankly, that doesn't sound like, sound government to me. Um.
I I understand.
Yes, course has done a lot of work. They've uncovered a lot of stuff, but. We've got to give, I I would like to give the people up there a chance to work. And what this is going to do and what they can do to improve their water usage before we hit them with a huge bill. I I think hitting them with a huge unexpected bill is going to.
Make the town.
That's my part of this. And I am going.
Would you be happy with, say, uh, an October start?
I would be happy. I would be happy with sending out. Two quarterly bills with what you would be paying. And getting the feedback and then we look at it um, in January. Um, and if we decide, if we think of the major rate change. Um, is. Appropriate then, we make the change in January where it's not going to have a huge effect on people. But they have another warning that this is coming.
Well, October, they would not have a big change. You're, you're, you're into the low, low, low water use order.
If if there are problems with people who have six kids and they're taking showers all the time, they'll, they'll see it more in October.
I, I think that's a, a, a good point that um. The people we want to influence, um, it's in some cases, it's almost too late. We, we're, and we're going to lose a year because we didn't get things done in a timely manner. Which unfortunately, I think um, we need to rethink how we um. As part of the governance project, I think there's some improvements we can make to make sure that things get done in a timely manner. Um, I, I wonder if we can send out the two bills, right, during this quarter. But do it in a way that that we get the feedback. Early enough so we can implement something in October. That's two and a half months away. Rather than waiting until um, January for the implementation, just because.
They, they get, they get the bill in October, so we don't get the feedback until they cut the bill.
Well, well, so what I was asking is, it's almost a um. Household by household modeling, you know, taking their existing usage, but apply the new rates, right? And say for, you know, April through, you know. Uh, Q two, here's what you paid. If you had had the new rate structure, here's what you would have paid. Okay, so we, I mean, we have history.
Okay.
That we could do that, so. Right, retroactive, um, doing what Brian said, but retroactively, right? Just to give them a sense, because that would.
Also, it's, it's also, I think we ought to do with the double. Two, two versions of the bill where the one and one is what you pay.
Yep.
Um, for the quarter that ends, you know, over, because there isn't time for people to adjust their behavior. That's.
Yeah.
Me.
I I guess what I'm suggesting is the behavior that needs to be adjusted. Isn't going to be adjusted till next June anyway. So that's why I'm not quite as worried about an October implementation. If we give people feedback on what their historic usage has been, old and new rate, we have another public forum. Um, that's my point today. I just don't think.
There's, there's no reason why we can't bring this up again in October and go through the same discussion or.
Or September, end of September.
Yeah.
Exactly.
I think that's a good compromise.
Well, there, there are bills that are going out in August. For uh, April, May, June. Okay.
Give them two bills.
That's, well, the question is, is in one month, can you do the programming to make that happen?
I have to talk.
That's, that's hard.
Or is it really everybody who needs to see those two bills or is it the same constituents that we sent the letter to?
Uh, it's mostly that.
So it's a subset, right? But I, but I would also ask that we um, you know, have a firm answer on the commercial as well.
The commercial on the schools.
Yeah.
Schools are.
Yes, I put that in the category as commercial.
I would be, uh, I would like to see that we table this, we visit this in September. Okay.
Let, let me suggest instead of table it.
I mean, at least we do.
That, that, that we agree to increase both the water and sewer rates by two and a half percent. As was projected in the budget and the, that we passed at the annual time meeting. And that we agreed that we carry this um, in September.
Yes. And then just, I want to make sure we give the team a clear action or Chuck, whoever. On what it's going to take, wha- what we need them to do before we meet again in September.
Those, those bills normally go out in middle of August. To do what we want to do based upon the discussion I hear, I mean, maybe that gets delayed a week or two. I don't know that that's a big issue.
What, what do you do, set up mailing to those four hundred possible people with, here's your alternative bill if we had gone ahead? That's.
And it's actually. Yeah.
Well, yeah, but I, you know, the sooner we do something, the sooner we're going to learn how things fit together. And we've spoken with other communities and this does take some time. Years before you kind of figure out, okay, we're, we're making some progress. So I, I, uh, October is, is okay. I think is okay with me. I agree that the summer is pretty much gone. But um, I don't want to delay any more than that.
So. You might have a motion. To increase both the water and sewer rates. Currently doing that with two and a half percent. And. Um, reconsider. Progressive, more progressive rates on in uh, second September meeting.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Please, there's further discussion. Thank you, Brian. Brian?
No, yes. Further discussion, yes, let's go.
Kathy, yes. John?
Yes.
Anne says yes. Thank you all for, all of this, my contribution. Um, this has been a very educational experience. Um, and now I would like to take a two minute break because I have been sitting longer than is good for me. And then we will come back and have a discussion of Pickleball course. And I'm sorry to give all people who've been here listening to water rates, but this is an important. Greg, standing up is for you.
I mean, that's a pilot for quite a while and then.
No, that's going to go in parallel. We felt that it was going in parallel. The smart meters did not come first. We said this could all be done in parallel. It's going to be.
Yeah.
The pilots, the pilots can take a year.
Yeah.
You need a whole year of data.
But by the logic of sixty-five gallons per person, uh, commercial using, including the multi-family.
Probably not in the commercial. I mean, we've run some of the numbers for that. Twice as much. Okay. And so they're used to a ten thousand dollar bill. Now it's twenty thousand.
Exactly, that's.
This is my role. It's considerable to what they've been paying you, but.
Oh, raise rents.
I'll be there.
Yeah, but all of the multi-family things, we've, we've already discussed. We would talk with all of them and say, what is your number divided by the number of units?
Going to take all those files.
The business things.
The summer street, the Lee place and the Phillies and the Browns, they don't.
They all, they are. And they would, they would just get calculated after.
But in the past, they've got.
Coughing up, packing up a lump.
And the maintenance were just divided up by the number of units and then whatever. We're not talking a maintenance, yes, just talking to the. My daughter, we're not talking a maintenance, just talking to the management. So, yeah, you're dividing by the number of units. No, she also has. You know, on a case-by-case basis, he's not about to put in a separate meter.
Yeah, of course. Just one also, that's all.
Smart meters will be great.
I mean, I'm in the twenty percent and I know her lawn. But I, yeah.
No lawn, no pool, and you're up there. I don't know what's, is that, is that, that's based on ten, that's on ten-year history, and I don't know.
But it means that the big thing I was asking about is that the top twenty percent, you get a freedom of control by, and they all dramatically changed their behavior. They don't do what you think they're gonna do. They, you get what you want.
Then they.
Since my marriage.
Do not. Give me another. So, okay, that gap now remains consistent. You got it. Okay, okay.
So.
Thank you. Anybody know how to whistle?
Okay, so next, now we are going to discuss. Pickleball. Greg, do you? Well, of course, always you like to have Cheryl.
She's here.
I'm happy to have Cheryl give us the summary of what I've been saying. Um, they they have a copy of your timeline, which was very helpful. Bottom line is, I'll cut the chase, but you can add to the details. Uh, bottom line is, the the courts were in last summer. Um, there were some concerns raised by um a few residents near the the courts about the impact of the noise. The parking director went through a series of of steps to try to mitigate the noise, to reduce and control the time. Um, and embarked on a a study, uh, hired a consultant to look at potential mitigation measures focusing on on some sound barriers at the ports primarily. A commission of study that recommended extending the poles twelve feet high and putting barrier and soundproofing barriers on those on the poles. Um, and also recommended that the um the equipment that is has a lower sound generation factor um be used, or at least encouraged to be used. So that's the recommendation from the from the parking director committee to you to move forward with installing those barriers on the on the court. Um, and to encourage the use of the new equipment. So that's a very high-level overview, and I can have you fill in more details. Uh, but that's where things stand. So the recommendation is before you, and um you need to decide what to do with that recommendation.
Um, I think you will take the comments on this Hollywood's public hearing. But first, I would like to hear from the board.
Difficult topic, uh, these these walls. What do we know about them, uh, these barriers? Who's used them? I don't know what the what the cost is. Did you use them? What's worked, what hasn't worked? Uh, are there any around here that, I haven't even seen pictures. I don't know what what's involved with this. But there are an awful lot of unknowns that we're putting an awful lot of faith in here with regard to this product.
Well, one of the things I know more than I knew a year ago, I'll tell you that.
I was pretty involved.
Yeah, I do not know everything, I will say. Um, but originally, when we were looking at soundproof barriers, what we saw were colored basically plastic pieces that go on the fence. And we find out those actually reflect the sounds they can. If you're standing there and it's between us, I wouldn't hear things on, but if I was back or higher, or it would actually reflect the sound, so. Learned that's not good. So when we talked about um putting something on the fence, there's that, there's more of like a blanket type thing. The neighbors, so there's a couple of neighbors who um who are bothered by the sound, but there's other neighbors who do not want to see a wall there, so they've asked asked us to look into transparent barriers, which is why that was our recommendation based on what we heard from other neighbors. So in the end, uh, researching, there is only one type of transparent barrier, only one company makes it. Just having to have someone here tonight who knows more about it than I do. Um, if we do want to ask them questions, we have Joe Lyman in the back, who is also an ambassador for the area for pickleball. Um, so because they're the only company that makes it, that is probably what we would look at doing. Since our recommendation, I have also been um reached out by USA Pickleball that they would like to look into possibly running a couple of um tests, have us test out some stuff and and then possibly get a discounted rate, but I do not believe any of that stuff is transparent. And our committee does recommend the transparent, because that's what we heard from neighbors. Of course, then we'll also get into costs that right now. What we have is our CPA grant money minus the cost of the um pickleball sound mitigation study that we did. So obviously, that's also gonna be part of the equation. It's how much do we want to spend on that? We just want to spend what we have. More.
I have a question. Um, in the analysis, there were two things mentioned. One was the um clear sound mitigation, but there was also mention of a tennis ball. I I don't know what that looks like, or um, and I was just wondering, what's the cost difference between the two? And what is it, what is a tennis?
I think Brian's only laughing.
I'm thinking about an igloo.
He was, he was at the meeting when we did talk about it, so I did look into tennis bubbles, very at a high level. One company said anywhere from one million to two point five million dollars. Um, because you can't just have a bubble. Now you also need lights and you need air and, you know, so you need all that. Um, so then another company that I reached out to, I asked a little more specific. And they said, well, we could, we could get a bubble for five hundred thousand dollars. That would have the electricity in the air, um, but it would not stop the sound.
Right, yeah, to my price range. Thank you for that.
You're just able to play when it rains.
You could play twenty-four seven.
There you go. I I wasn't clear on what the actual cost of for the twelve-foot clear proposed um sound barrier.
So I I do have one estimate. Do you want to talk first?
No.
Uh, so I do have the, an estimate from the one company. So that it wouldn't, we would also need to extend the fence, so there would be that additional cost, but that one company that does does do them. And again, we have our representative here, if we want to ask more specific questions, that would be twenty-six thousand, seven hundred twenty dollars approximately. It's not um.
This is for a what, a?
For a clear barrier in the front, and then on the Sweeney Park side, halfway down, it would be more of a noise absorbing, so it would not be clear, but on that that um side, sixty feet down, twelve feet high, could be um.
And you mentioned that along with that twenty-seven thousand dollars, that's one of those it would be two sound studies.
So, yes, and they would test the sound before. They've already done a couple of sound tests, but they'll do some more sound tests to see where we're at with anything, with nothing. And then they would put up their product and see what the sound is after with the guarantee of what they could do, so. How many decibels they can take it down.
And so, the meetings that I attended, I think there were more people concerned about uh the aesthetics than the acoustics. As far as the neighbors felt. Obviously, there were a couple of people, you know, two, two or three neighbors that were very concerned about the acoustics. But uh there were a lot more that I that I heard, more concerned what they were looking at. Okay, so I think that's why they're looking to be uh declared.
Now, so thought that clear was somewhat of a safety.
Issue.
No time for jokes.
But so, I mean, that's, that's what I heard.
You said you had um some CPC money, and I've forgotten, I didn't write down the amount.
It's okay. We have nineteen thousand dollars left.
Nineteen thousand, and and you would be, you're for this litigation, it would be twenty-six, twenty-seven, so you're looking for.
So if that's what, if you accept that recommendation and you also agree that that's what should be done, then yes, we'd also have to find, figure out where to get the extra money.
Could that come from the revolving fund?
It could.
From the revolving fund? Because I think we take money out of it sometimes, and.
Um, we need to know more about the um been going on for a year. We've been hearing a lot. We needed to kind of finish it and make a decision and move on, and we're looking for your support.
Uh, a cou- couple of things. So the report that was put together, that was done with modeling, were they actually here, or they said send us the decibel levels and we'll use, we'll we'll look at, use GPS to look at your geography and put something together. So they they were not actually here, standing out there, looking at various, so this is all modeling.
This is all modeling. Uh, and it did send them the state decibel report, but they didn't find it really relative to what they were doing. So they were, they used the decibel counts just from their general knowledge of what's around.
So they weren't even our decibel counts.
No, and they um they gave us a good idea of how to understand it, um, but they also called one twenty-seven a country road, I believe, so.
It's a state, yeah.
Not, we'd want the real numbers before we started. I mean, we have the state numbers, but as the Board of Health said, too, we want some more readings done.
One of the things that they say a lot in here is that the sound that comes out, comes out of a pickleball court is not like a waterfall, where it's a continuous roar. It's intermittent and and more like moving next to a rifle range.
Right, which people do.
People do, right here, yeah, but um, so it's, it's it's the nature of the noise.
Right, the frequency and the frequency, so you know what I mean?
The frequency and the intermittent nature, right, that 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 make it particularly difficult, which means that you have to be careful when you're either your installer or the state is measuring, that they are in fact measuring in a way that that reflects the nature of the noise, not just, okay. Um. I would like to hear from the expert.
Yeah.
Joe, would we call you an expert?
Um, Joe Lyman, um, he's not from Manchester, but uh he's been asked, district ambassador for Big Bang. Travis, uh, everything out to Woodster from the the Hampshire down to the islands. Uh, running into obviously many cities and towns that are having noise issues. And uh there are several different ways of uh mitigating, one being the barriers. Uh, company that I'm involved with, uh, they're the only ones that have a clear, a clear product, which does mitigate the sound, not quite as uh heavily as three of their other products. So they have uh different ones that depending upon the distance from uh residents. But uh the clear work very well along the one twenty-seven, it's probably a hundred and twenty foot long. Like uh, right now, it's ten foot height fencing. It's been suggested to increase that to twelve. And along the sides, the six-foot side, six-foot fencing. And increasing it to twelve, so there will, there will be that cost. In addition to the panels themselves. Uh, but the clear panels do two things. One is provide the noise mitigation, but also for safety purposes, it allows security, so you can actually see into the court, so no nefarious issues are going on in there. So those courts, I had provided the information that the wood, the actual uh logistics of where they are to the company that did the sound test, did the presentation that you have in your hands. And uh I had done some sound tests myself, which I also provided to them, and to Cheryl. So the, what was there originally, I'm assuming there were two tennis courts, which would be a lot quieter, obviously. Now there's six pickleball courts, and I took readings when nobody was there, took readings when there were all six courts going. And when uh just uh this morning, there were just the four courts on one of which I was on and uh Jeff over here was there as well. So the uh, so you have a combination of issues. One is you don't want it to make, to look like a uh totally enclosed building. Uh, so that the clear will will work for that. The uh, and the other ones were that we would use on the side, a performance series, which absorbs the sound uh. And this company that they're not, they didn't just get into this business. They've been doing it for like fifty years. Sound mitigation, so that's, that's their core business. Uh, the company, the product comes from New Zealand. And like I say, they've been making these kinds of products for about fifty years, so it's not, it's not a new venture for them. Some of the other companies are relatively new. Uh, one product is being used at Burlington, Mass, um, that they really wouldn't use again, except that they already bought them, and they're in use now. Uh, so when they moved to a different location, which was a former ice rink versus ice or skating rink, they will still, they will transport those, but I don't think they have enough to go all the way around, so I suggested filling the the gap with the product from this company. Um, but then Wellesley has issues, you know, there are issues around other cities and towns that I'm very aware, very aware of, some of which has been in the newspapers. Uh, but there's also some issues where people that don't really understand the situation, you know, from like two and a half, three miles away from a potential location. Like in Beverly, with the brand new courts are uh were built, just waiting for the purchase order for the uh the barriers. But there, they they're limited because it's on a landfill. They couldn't put up twelve-foot uh fencing. It's only six feet. But there's a building there as well to help block the sound. So uh but there are people definitely that have no, not have no ideas of uh of any of this. And like I say, they're they're way beyond any sound issues. Uh, but it's it's Sweeney, and you could hear, you can hear the train when it goes by from the court, at the courts, and that's probably three, four hundred or more feet away. But that's basically this, this information.
Yeah, so um, we're, I I have not seen a picture. And furthermore, I'm not say, where where has this been installed? Well, like within a hundred miles of here.
Well, this particular company is um working and trying to get, because the company in Connecticut that has the United States rates, rights for this product.
Yeah.
Uh, they're trying to get uh information from uh Hush Tech, which is the name of the company in New Zealand for United States locations. But they've used the a a competitive brand that they've had for, that has some of the same features, except not the clear. And uh those are along, I think, one, one twenty-eight and uh I forget what what area, but I can get that kind of information for you. And uh, but like you say, they've been doing it uh around constructions, construction sites are where this technology was originally developed for. You know, we have jackhammering and other situations that are even more annoying than pickleball.
So it's tough to find a site because a lot of it was construction sites that are no longer construction sites, so.
Right, so, so as, as a pickleball solution, I don't get the feeling that anybody has tried this as a pickleball solution. They have, they have, or a, a similar product.
Correct.
But not around here, cause there are lots of towns that are going through what we're going through.
Right.
And none of them have pulled the trigger on anything yet.
They have, like he said, the Burlington, they bought this, like if you ask around first, the first thing that comes up is this stuff that's called Acoustifence. So Burlington bought the Acoustifence, and then they put it up and it didn't work. It
That's my second question.
Works to a point. That was the thing that I was talking about, that if, if I put it between us right now and you talked, I wouldn't hear you. But if I moved back or up, I would. So it wasn't absorbing the sound, it was kind of reflecting it back. Is that, you think that's?
Some that are reflective of the sound, and there are others that have absorbed the sound. So the ones that absorb the sound, uh, the part that people within that space would not be, would not have uh, adverse uh, issues with the, with the sound. But with the Acoustifence, it reflects the sound. So it's louder within that space than it is outside the space. So there, there are issues to consider.
Yeah.
Visibility, sound, and uh, absorption versus reflection. I didn't remember about the various activities going on behind uh, the uh, darkened screens, so that's.
I definitely did, and that ran it by the chief, yes. He was not too concerned that, if, even if it was uh, even if it wasn't the clear, he wasn't too concerned. They could go around, but.
I would, I would. When they're not used, so that might reduce the number of people who.
We have been doing that, so um, it's a timeline, yeah, we've been blocking them at eight P M.
No, I just, that was just uh, an added advantage.
Yes, right.
I think you said that, that the company would do a sound test before, a sound test afterward. And what's the guarantee that, of this reduction?
Well, the uh, just technologies, they have the tests to be anywhere uh, for the clear, it's about uh, about a twenty percent reduction in sound. And it'll break it.
Would you be like ten decibels down?
About that, yeah. Yeah, cause right now it's in the mid-fifties.
Yeah.
Or whether you're at uh, Eight Far Street or uh, one forty-two Summer Street, which were the two, yes.
Yeah.
Two, two areas that were in the complainants or uh, suggested to, for uh, to do the tests.
So, so it's mid-fifties right now, and this should reduce it to mid-forties?
No, 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 no.
No, no, no.
Reduce it to uh, less than fifty. Less than fifty decibels, which is uh, normal talking, this uh, uh, in the report that you have.
Yeah.
Yeah, on the, the, tells you, you know, roughly what uh,
On page.
It's uh, you have fifty decibels, that's moderate rainfall. Uh, forty, it's a refrigerator, et cetera, and sixty is normal conversation. But it's in uh, like, we're talking now, if I had my meter, you know, being around sixty, don't need to be. But it's not the impact that, you know, a plastic ball on a hard surfaces, which is different. So uh.
You would take that into account as well, right?
My, my question is, if this, if the solution doesn't work, if it doesn't get the reduction that it's promised, what's our recourse?
So we talked about there being a guarantee of, that then they would add more to it, if, yeah, so they would have to add, add more to it.
Make it away and give us back our money.
Yeah.
Work out something uh, on that respect.
Is there?
Yeah. Well, just before you open it up, I guess, to public comment, I am on the Parks and Rec committee, and I just.
And you're off and dris go.
I, I apologize. Mountain Driscoll thirty-three Bridge Street. I haven't done that in a long time. I just think it's important um, to note that the Parks and Rec Director Cheryl and the committee have um, respectfully been very diligent in trying to meet the concerns um, of pickleball players and the neighborhood. And I think we've been, Cheryl has been very responsive to those concerns. I think we are probably a lot uh, uh, earlier in the game, so to speak, than other communities that have put pickleball courts in, in terms of figuring out some sound mitigation. So I have always felt like the approach is a compromise to the concerns of everyone. I just felt that it's important to, we need to put that out on the table. You know, John, to your point, we wish there were courts we could go look at and see what these types of screens, walls, whatever, actually look like. Maybe we should go to a museum. They're just, they're not around here yet, so we could, Burlington.
Okay, so, I can interrupt.
Yeah, sure, yeah.
Yeah, so what you would see is just a, a green wall of material. Uh, the Acoustifence, which Cheryl mentioned, there's uh, there are grommets, the uh, they're attached to the.
And they're talking about, see something that, like we're talking about.
Correct, okay. Yeah, so all you're gonna see in, in just about all of them, whether it's the company out of uh, Western Mass or uh, Acoustifence, which is out of Florida, or uh, any of the others.
I think what we're gonna see is what we're going to get.
Yeah, all you're gonna see is a, a, a wall of green or whatever color they provide, or.
They wanna see your product working.
Right, somewhere in any application.
Perhaps a YouTube video?
Two things. One is uh, like, I'm hoping we can get samples in because the fellow that's coming from uh, USA Pickleball was heavily involved with uh, all of the, all of these types of things. Uh, is supposedly coming into New England sometime within the next couple of weeks. So we're hoping to get the samples in for everybody to see. Probably if they're coming.
Yeah, website.
Yeah, I said, yeah, yeah, it's Hush, Hush Tech USA.
Hush Tech?
Yeah, H U S H T E C, USA dot com. And there's uh, half a dozen different products that are listed there from the clear, the performance, the mission, the I think of the other three, but they're rolling.
Does it do any good to mix and match? I mean, if you had the high performance on the lower path and the clear, starting six, five feet up or something, does that gain you anything?
Well, yeah, it would, it would gain uh, it would gain some.
A bit cheaper. Really what you want.
No, I wasn't, I was really, but.
More expensive, cause the performance is more expensive than the clear.
Yeah, I'm just trying to achieve the maximum.
Right.
What we're doing, what we're doing in Beverly is uh, there'll be uh, the solid ones uh, facing the building, and along one side, there'll be some clear and some of the Mission Series, which is solid. Um, so that way, they can see in, people waiting, cause there's no space, there won't be space within the, the confines to put benches, so people outside the fence can at least see what's going on inside, as well as the police or anybody else.
Yeah.
What are you looking for from us tonight?
Um, your support, for sure. Um.
Accepting the recommendation. Having a little trouble sorting out the recommendation at the moment. Um, so you're recommending a clear twelve foot fence, which require, i- in, on the north side, requires increasing the size of the poles, or in the two feet overall, yeah, yeah. And then probably something else on the side facing, I guess that would be east, no, west.
With Sweeney Park.
Towards Sweeney, and the others toward the um, on.
No, we won't do anything on the other side.
Okay.
So just on that Sweeney Park side halfway down.
Okay.
And, and, and this is mounted on the fence with grommets. It's like a big blank.
Pretty much like the clear.
The uh, the units have uh, the, when they attach to each other, there's uh, Velcro, so there's no leakage between panels. So there's no sound leakage between the panels.
But it's, but it's.
Vertically Velcroed, but then the grommets all the way on the other three sides.
Is this, is this an item that is kind of weatherproof, three sixty-five, or is this something that you take down in the wind?
It's, you weave them up.
Yeah.
They're, they're, for indoor or outdoor use.
One of these samples coming in?
Well, I'm trying to find, you know, hopefully within the week and a half or so.
We don't necessarily have to put a time on it right now.
No, I'm, I'm interested, you know, it's very abstract right now.
Right. So I guess the concept now, because we've kind of been debating it at all our meetings and kind of don't know much information, so.
Just question, if we were to um, give you our support, what are the next steps?
Working more with Joe and USA Pickleball to, to see the samples.
See samples?
Yeah, hopefully see another community that has them. Um, Beverly's will, will likely be installed before ours, so see how it goes there.
Oh, I'm sorry, they are using the clear?
So they are getting.
See some clear, but mo- mostly not. But the, the problem there is that the fence is only six foot nine. But the closest residence is uh, two hundred and fifty feet.
So, so um, next step would be uh, see the samples, see what Beverly does, like when would we expect to hear that?
With a cost estimate?
Yes.
Even a month?
But when's Beverly supposed to install?
We don't know. There's a long story as to why they haven't been.
So we don't know, we don't have it installed.
But uh, once we get the purchase order, it'll be about four weeks. So hoping sometime mid-August.
Okay, all right, well, that's not far.
Are there comments?
Do you have hands up online?
Okay, um, this time, not being a public hearing, um, I'm going to be.
Got three hands so far.
I'm going to if there are three hands so far, I will take four comments, but they must be brief, to the point, and don't talk to each other, please. So.
First, first up is Christina.
Christina.
Hi, thanks, Anne. Christina Delissio, Six Lincoln Ave. I just have a couple of comments. So I guess without a sound ordinance in town, I think it's really um, great that you are trying to make a compromise. I guess I did look at the report and without sound measures, my concern is that we're setting like a precedent, and we're going down to slippery soap, and where does this sound mitigation stop around town? And that was my first point. And then what happens if um, the few neighbors that are complaining at this point are not happy with the mitigation? Point number two, and does it just make sense to go back to tennis? It seems like a whole lot of, I know people love pickleball, but at this point, does it make sense to just cut bait and go back to tennis? Thanks, Chris. Thank you.
Oh. I must have missed a word or two, I'm sorry. Um. Your last point was, if this doesn't work, what do we do next?
Right, if, if the neighborhood complaints are not, are not relieved, if they're not satisfied with these, you know, this has been a year of, you know, I've been listening and following up on this. If, if the neighborhood's not satisfied with the mitigation, then what? That, that's my question.
I think the, um, the, we close the courts in December. And I think, then if the neighbors are still not satisfied, then we come back and talk about it again, but it.
Tell me, to me, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I- in my opinion, it would be nice to try something and see if in fact we can keep the courts where they are. Um, and, and mitigate the sound enough so that the neighbors are not.
So is there some kind of like release that if you, you do this, we're done? Like, it seems like we're putting a lot of time and money for um, a few amount of residents that, that are making a lot of noise. So I just, it sounds like, what, can we get some kind of agreement? That this is the end. And if that's not, I'm not sure if, if this path is the best path. That's it, thanks.
Thank you, I think I understand now. Um.
Yes, um, my name is Kim Logue. I live at one forty-two Summer Street, directly across from the pickleball courts. There um, there are times during the day when all six courts are going, where I can't even be in parts of my house because if a game is going on, and six games are going on, at certain times, it's not all the time, I'll admit that, that, that's four thousand pops going on, which is very annoying. Um, it looks like a fun game, but I think that um, putting up a sound barrier, twelve feet in the front, and twelve feet on either side, both sides, not in the back, because that will just go into the woods, may help, but I'm not sure. We went, me and a few neigh, another neighbor, went to the Board of Health meeting the other day, and they were not happy with the sound mitigation report because it was based on a model. They were saying that it needs to be done, a sound um, report needs to be done at the court. Um, and I thought that's what they had recommended to the select board, which was the purpose of the meeting tonight. But I don't know that that was brought forth in that manner.
Um, thank you, um.
And I, I'm not quite sure twenty-six thousand dollars is going to solve the problem.
Thank you. You said.
George Davis.
George Davis. George. Is there? Further discussion?
All right, I'm.
Oh, sorry, George.
I'm sorry, uh, it's Lisa Bonneville.
Hi, Lisa, sorry.
Uh, I'm, I have just a couple of questions. Uh, it, I I feel that uh, the product, I, I feel that there's could be some further information brought before the, the board in order to make a decision like this, like uh, seeing the product, um, going to a place where it's been installed. I think those are important aspects. The clear, uh, the promise of a clear uh, sound mitigation barrier, um, that would need to be sound absorption, otherwise the sound would be twice as loud for the people playing, and what about people watching? Um, from the outside of the clear barrier, uh, would their voices be heard by the people who they're cheering on, on the courts? Uh, what will that do to the interaction between the, the players and their, and their uh, you know, observers? And um, and the other question is, is it possible, uh, with those points in mind, to back up the sound?
uh, with those points in mind to back up the sound mitigation barrier to um a space behind the fence that goes around the courts so that people watching uh, could be more interactive with the people playing? Um, obviously, uh, one concern of mine is the longevity bench that faces these courts. Uh, would anyone sitting on those on that bench be able to um, watch the people playing? And um, so tho- those are questions that uh, that I wanted to pose and uh, thank Cheryl and her team for putting um, time and effort and concern into putting a presentation together, but it seems that it could uh, there are just a lot of questions hanging about this uh, product and um, I'm I don't have experience with grommets um, lasting for a long time in outside. So that's uh, you know, I just have more questions than and concerns. And I guess I've listed them all. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Are there any other notes?
Can I just say one more, say one more thing? The report that was done based on a model um, lists the decibels at seventy-one at my house, not fifty. I think it was stated that it was at fifty and it would bring it down to forty, but the report says seventy-one.
Thank you. What we've been asked to do is say whether we think it makes sense to go forward and find out see the samples come back in a month, which would be our August something or the second meeting, you know, I understand. I'm personally sorry that we can't do something sooner because I really feel for people who are not able to enjoy, peacefully enjoy their homes. And and I understand that can make people very unhappy. Um. But.
That's what we're trying to find the balance.
I guess.
And I don't think, I mean, I heard Christina mention making them tennis courts again. I think if we tried to make them tennis courts now, people would play pickleball there anyways. So it's yeah, that still, um, and we as a park and rec committee don't see the the need for tennis courts that we saw, that the need for pickleball courts. So we're trying to balance the needs of the players with the needs of the neighborhood. And it's like Muffin said, it's probably not going to be anybody's one hundred percent happy. But we're trying to find something that's kind of a little over both that will help.
Clearly, what we have is not doing that. So I think we should go, you should go ahead. We should figure out how we're going to, if the material turns out to look good, what, how we're going to pay for it? Um, given that we're kind of in between budgets. And I would like to say the things that the Parks and Rec Committee should should go ahead and investigate this and report back at our second August meeting. So move, so. Where's the session?
Well, no, not on that. Something after that. Yes.
Okay. Uh, Brian?
Yes.
Kathy, yes. I'd say yes.
Okay, good. But I just have one follow-up question. So the report also threw up some information with regard to paddles and balls. What is the Parks and Recreation's official position on that?
So um, there is technology that is working towards quieter paddles and balls. They're not readily available right now. I do think that over time that's probably what the.
Can you get one on Amazon?
But I don't think it's going to be quick. No, the ones I got on Amazon, I was told are the worst. So I didn't know what it was like to twenty-five dollar Franklin ones that I played with pieces of plywood, basically, which is the worst. Um, but so the better record, better paddles are quieter and they're still working towards it. But I I'm sure it's going to be a while before.
So we can probably get a a, an acoustic barrier before we can get, I believe so.
That point is that you can man, we're talking about individuals who are purchased there.
We would encourage the use.
You might have.
No, I I agree. It's it's very difficult. And the the effect of those, the paddles and balls did not seem to be anywhere near what it would be for the wall. The the wall is, its efficiency is is kind of difficult, questionable, but still, I mean, the paddles are even tougher.
Right.
And you had mentioned, chair there. I would encourage exploring that uh, relationship with uh, is it people USA or they've they've reached out to you about uh, and why not become a, give you people someone? Someone wants to pay for some of that.
Right. We're thinking of checking that out. And actually, Joe's involved in that too. So it's not like it's one or the other. It may be something that works together. Um, so.
And 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 we can reach out. Because think about perhaps having clear down to the bottom in the section in front of the the longevity bench. And maybe you can't see quite as well in the corner courts, but um, and more absorption.
What what could be done is say the bottom half, say, you kind of, if you're increasing the height of the fence to twelve feet, the first ten will be clear. Top, top of the two with the
Okay.
The other one.
That's right.
There are options. I mean, the company makes sizes to fit applications. So the custom sizes is not a big deal.
That would be part of us in the test case.
Cheryl, have you been in touch with your peers in these, some of these other towns?
Yes, I have.
And are we ahead of the curve?
Um. Not ahead, but um, does appear that about some people say one percent, some people say ten percent of the courts do have the um, issues with the neighbors. Uh, and like I said, my friend in Burlington said, don't get acoustic fence, whatever you do. And then my friend in Pevy D is like, move as far away as you can. They are. Um, so, yes, there's
Okay.
Issues.
We're not the only ones.
No, I I know that. You should all be talking to each other, looking for, they've all got the same problem.
Exactly. Nobody has the silver bullet solution.
No.
Thank you. I'm we can continue this discussion um, after the meeting so that we can maybe get home before midnight.
Could I, can I make one request?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I'll make it quick. This is it. Um, until it can be mitigated, can we reduce the hours from say nine to five? Could that be of consideration until we get this cleared up?
That's an interesting um, suggestion. Um.
It's been, it was suggested last year, but nothing ever happened with it.
This is the first time it's come up in front of this board.
Mm-hmm.
It's come up with come up to the Parks and Rec Committee in the past. Nine, nine to five, sounds like the kind of a hard thing to do.
Yeah, so it says working people.
Well. Um.
Anyone want to speak on behalf of the ball?
Um. What would happen if you reduce the hours on weekends?
Surely, into doing that. I would want to get a recommendation from the Park and Rec Committee. I mean, obviously, you guys can overall, that's what you decide to do, but I would like to start there.
Yes.
Yeah, I understand. You see, people want to play early. They want to play late. In the middle of the day, those sports are very rarely used from eleven to three, and then it's busy again. People come home from work. They'd like to play at Park and Rec initially at the course open what dawned on us.
Eight to eight.
Well, originally, it was on to
to eight. To eight. I'd see if we work in the book. Again, most of the players in the morning and later in the day.
My only concern about reducing any hours is would that cause more courts to be used at the same time and worsen the noise problem for the hours that it's used? I am a little bit hesitant to make a snap decision about this with.
I would say that is what happened in the mornings that when when people were showing up at six thirty, there was, you know, that would play sixty to ninety minutes, six thirty, another group at eight. Now, when we moved the time up to eight, now all those groups are current at eight. So now they usually are packed right at eight AM until ten thirty, eleven.
You're the experts.
But I mean, certainly look into changing some weekend hours. That's what I was to do.
I guess yesterday in the middle of the day.
Okay, because nobody's there anyway. I'm not going back and lock up.
Um. Let's move on. Thank you. I think you have what you need.
Yeah.
Um, we will need to hear more and more. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Love.
Thank you for saying. I didn't have a choice. I know. Right. Thank you. That's why Jack wasn't on any meeting.
No, 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 no. Um, we have the American Legion Alcohol License Amendment next.
Right.
And we're only an hour and a half late so far.
You want these ones?
Um. Is there a move to approve the um, American Legion Alcohol License Amendments? Some of them.
Sorry, I just have one question. Oh, I I say.
Okay. After this, I'm gonna second.
That's when the discussion occurs. So I just, I don't know if it was a typo. Alan Kirker is not a USA citizen. That's what I thought. I know, Alan. He from Canada or something?
Have you talked to him? He's an Irish guy. He was in the US military.
Yeah, yeah, he was. You're right.
He says he is an American citizen. He may not be mature.
And on the bullet, you know.
Okay, fine.
There, there it is right there. No, says no. So minor issue. But.
Are we listening?
Yeah.
Well, we can't.
Anyone who doesn't, we're questioning them.
Okay, I was looking at. Okay, you're right.
So I was straightening that out, but that's.
Um. I assume I need this now in order to keep serving alcohol?
No. No, they have their license.
Okay.
Yeah, this is to actually fix the the manager and other, the the articles of organization that that's needed to be updated. So, but no, they have a license right now.
Okay, so I suggest that we investigate this and find out whether a apparently it says somewhere that um, where it says, oh, yes, right. Almost the US citizens. Yeah. Okay, yeah, very nice.
So let us follow up.
Okay. So, um. Shall we withdraw the motion? I withdraw the motion. Well, that was hard to know, but um.
I have my hand up.
Oh, Sarah, I'm sorry.
So, yeah, my question is, does this application impact the hours they're allowed to be outside? It was my understanding when they installed the deck, they were required to shut down at ten PM. And several years ago, they had a jet or jazz festival which went beyond that. Um, and I, they're going to have it again in August. And I don't know if that's a separate separate permit or what the situation is, but their their amps were so loud that it reverberated off my house. And it seems like they could be a little more quiet. And I just don't know where it fits in with the license. I don't know if there was a special permit on the deck. I'm not sure what the situation was. Thanks.
Thank you, Sarah. I'm sorry I didn't see your hand up.
No problem.
We can let us follow up on that.
Yeah, I don't think this addresses that.
Part of the original. So we'll have to just pick out the original license and see what the time was.
And and maybe they have a special permit for a special event?
No.
Okay. Okay. Okay, so.
So we'll follow up on that as well.
Thank you. Okay, um, quarterly reviews. Um, yeah. Todd, you gave us a very nice report on what you've been doing. Thank you. Um. Brian, do you have questions or comments?
I'm looking at the real. Not me.
No, it was a great report. Um, I thought it was a really great quarter for you, Todd. Um, I just had a couple of questions. So you mentioned that the the dispatch and data conversion was completed. Is that?
It's still on, it's still ongoing.
For the historical data. Okay, so when do we expect that to be done?
By the end of this.
Okay. Right, so I'll go for twenty twenty-four.
Yeah.
So. Have you decided like how much you're gonna actually need to?
Well, we're still working through the master name files and trying to redo the, take out the duplicates.
But are you intending to keep everything or did you determine that?
We haven't determined that. That's something I have to work with.
Okay, because um.
That's because they are going to help with that transfer.
Right, okay, because we want to keep what we have to keep and no more. Okay, all right, great. And then um, just regarding your role in the emergency preparedness, do a lot of great work on that as well. Um, do you anticipate conducting any tabletop exercises?
Well, that's something we've talked about with uh, our regional coordinator. So I'm not sure if it's uh, you know, how close we are with that, but that should be something we're going to do in the future, especially with the with the brand that we have that we're going to do.
Great. And um, in the collateral that I saw, I didn't see specific like goals that you had. Is that I saw the memo on the past. Is there a set of fiscal year twenty-four goals?
So.
Right, but um, sort of the ongoing goals focus on community policing.
Right.
Uh, making, making sure that the increased staffing is all functioning well. To me, those are the, the finishing up on dispatch. To me, those are the three primary goals for this next quarter.
Okay, so I just think it's good to look out the whole year. You did a great job last year, and it's good to kind of parse out, you know, what you think you may want for quarterly goals, because then we can look at that and see where do we need to get engaged to help you. It's hard to do that if it's it's kind of against our bed to us. So, um, but I, great, we're in the community, um, policing stuff is a lot of fun and first.
Three two hundred kick drive.
That was awesome.
Who says great?
Thank you. That was it.
Uh, just a couple of things I wanted to mention though, um, the harbor, they have the extra staffing, the the harbor full, so I'd be out there forty hours a week.
Nice.
And then uh, the the addition of the retired officer Roger Thurlow from the private office has been working out really good. So that's a huge plus with the vision.
I have heard from Byron that he's happy to have some police presence to actually deal with. And and I watched the boat bring in a whaler with sixteen. And and I watched the boat bring in a whaler with sixteen people in it.
Yeah, I heard about that. With with no life jackets.
Well, certainly not sixteen.
Yeah, right. Yeah, it's working out really well.
And and it's keeping. It's it's dealing with problems and and not establishing sort of I suppose I shouldn't doubt what police states. Yeah, it it may hinder the friendly nature of the harbor while dealing, so.
So so Roger's really good with that and over the years with his thirty plus years experience in environmental police and he's done a phenomenal job in like training some of our new people, but just educating them. And that's the approach that we're taking. Yeah, no, just a couple of questions. You mentioned about the data transfer associated with the regional nine one one. That is the end of the fiscal year or the end? So it's another another year. That's a long time. Yeah, it is. So we have the old system. We've been for it for this one year and that's what regional suggested when we make a switch. So we still have the time to to do it. I hope to have it done earlier than that, but we have the whole business.
It's not out of the ordinary.
Okay, alright. Okay, it's a long time, but it's not a it's not a high pressure event. I mean, it's it's kind of backfilling.
It's better to figure out what data you really need.
Yeah. Alright, so that is. That was fiscal year. Okay, good. And so you're overtime, assuming everything fits together, nobody gets sick or hurt or anything like that. It kind of goes away or? Well, I think in the short term, we have the new people onboard. Officer Ramus is graduating the academy on the twenty sixth. That's one of our first people. Two more, Officer Kevin David and Chelsea Riley, who was a former dispatcher. She passed her physical fitness standards and now she's gonna be hired full time and go to the academy. So we will see an increase in overtime when those two go to the academy, but I applied for a two hundred and seventy day waiver through the Mass Police Training Council. And that will give us through the summer, through the and possibly through the holidays to to have that extra staffing onboard before and over the winter, we'll send them to the full time academy and they should be back by July. This is six month academy. So we will see an increase in overtime when they're not. Okay, and that in that six month period? In that six month period.
Something something that the fire chief did in his report to us was list the amount of overtime that had been spent.
Yeah, I think you wanted that last time and I did not. I'll include that next time.
Our recent experience makes that very attractive.
Yeah, right. Yeah.
You know, if 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 we have it, you know, keep it out to us for our current status and 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 then included in giving that.
Yes, so the basically the way we have the these schedules kind of now, it's gonna be the overtime's gonna be on the midnight shift because we're not running the safe lobby at that point. And you know, we've we've already had cases where someone's out thick and someone's on vacation and we still have the extra staff on the independent to go to that overtime room. So because I was there, we kind of was there or so it is working, but I can give you. To that point, and 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 I did read the the report that came from Chief McNeely as well. And I think both of you guys should put together some sort of a format that's very similar, because half of the things that you do is similar. You're both dealing with staff issues, both dealing with technology issues. And if it can be put together on one page on a quarterly basis, because that's kind of what this amounts to. I I think that would be great. Then we know what we're looking at and where to look for things right away and it would make things.
The chief and I can put.
Yeah, I I mean, I saw the form he had and I assume he probably had that from Middleton or from Belmont or something else. That is pretty good layout. Let's use it here.
I I think we may want somewhat more on the quarterly review.
Yes.
But perhaps a one page monthly.
Just it was good. Yeah.
And then.
Okay, that's fine. We'll work on.
Great.
Great.
Other. So good quarter. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you. I was too.
Have a good night, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. I know.
So obviously, not even two weeks on the developer, whatever, I want to share what you do, but for a good start. Nice to have some updates on some of your work that you've done already. So you can share a little bit about that, but I think really the focus is what what are you hoping to see going forward? I think that's where the conversation obviously has the focus. But if you wanted to start out, chief?
Yeah, I mean, the first two weeks has been very busy call wise. Fifty four, I think it was fifty six or fifty four runs just for that little less than two week period. So it's really busy. I've met with I met with the last firefighter today, so I met with the entire staff and kind of looked at what some of our strengths are, what some of our weaknesses are. I have an office meeting tomorrow, which we're gonna kind of address or try to come up with a game plan to address some of the concerns the staff has, which I think a lot of them are valid concerns. And look at like a three month, six months, nine month limitation of some changes to rectify some of those. Obviously, we can't fix every one of those, but we'll certainly try to improve the working environment. And people love the job. So with that, we finally got a win on the vehicles and you won pass inspection after it still has no AC, but that'll be fixed tomorrow, so hopefully that will rectify our pump. We are gonna maintain the Boston pump as our second piece, because since the squad went to Dunceball, it doesn't leave us with a second truck to pump water until we get a lot of fucking building we can do that. So unless another town needs it as a primary truck, we're gonna host it here. It's ready to go. We put equipment on it. So we can maintain that in the meantime. Updates, we had two firefighters graduate the academy Friday and you'll see a drastic decrease in the overtime once they come onboard. These now, three out of the four groups have four firefighters assigned, so even if one's out on PTO or vacation, except personal time, we'll drop down to three working per group. So it's not gonna completely eliminate it, but it's a already a drastic improvement from what it was. And one of our firefighters will be heading to the academy August seventeenth. And again, he's that fourth person on the group, so unless another group member takes some type of leave time, we can absorb that without additional overtime cost. A software project. So coming in, one of the biggest universal complaints across the board, both with officers and firefighters, was the IMC, which currently is it's a more of a police software than a fire software. And speaking with other fire chiefs, that's a common theme. And I spoke with the Middleton chief at length, they're actually putting the bill for a catch basically from IMC to a fire based software. So all the stuff from regional still come across and it'll be a unified software program. The one problem I have with IMC and currently we have five other software programs that none of which speak to one another. So getting data in to get benchmarks to even start the process is very difficult. So the we already had money in the budget we carried over from last year that will help us institute this one thought where basically everything talks to one another, we can finally have some good information to build from. Because right now it's all over the place. And you know, I wasn't gonna make any changes coming through the door, but kind of like Todd's doing is are we moving information over to another system? If we are, we should really do it with a system that works, it's gonna work for us. We're not just moving it to move it again down the line, so. And the only other thing that's kind of come up simultaneous calls, so I know obviously July is a busy time for us anyway. But having six within a short period of time was, I thought, pretty impressive. We were able to handle them with mutually aid ambulances coming in. So one of the things I'm looking at currently is we do a lot of work with Essex and we actually just entered into agreement where to report a structure fire. Anywhere in time, they're automatically gonna send their ladder truck. They have a reported structure fire anywhere in their town, we're gonna send our engine company. So that's, we already headed over there and got canceled Sunday morning, went into effect eight o'clock Sunday morning. And nine oh six, I think we went over, we got canceled before we hit the town line, but it's already instituted. But on the ambulance side of things, my big concern is we only have one ambulance in town. So obviously, state law says our ambulance is available, somebody calls for it, we have to send it. We don't really have an option not to do that. However, a lot of our calls that we're doing with Essex and Wenton, they're just looking for ALS service, not necessarily a transporting ambulance. So we're looking at potentially using an SUV to provide the paramedic service and actually leave our ambulance in town so we can service our citizens and businesses. I think that's a little bit better option as a stop gap until we get that second ambulance. I think it's on the budget three years from now, I think, because of the master plan as it's laid out. So this would be a stop gap measure. Really doesn't cause the SUVs probably fifty five, sixty thousand also versus four hundred for an ambulance. So it's a decent stop gap measure in the short term to maintain services for our citizens. That's what I got.
We talked about this.
Yeah.
I understood that it would be very short money to put cabinets into engine one and have a response. Maybe not ideal. But have a second ALS responder. Talk about if you said, well, the problem of that is if you're if it's on transport, you have to wait. You can get the person in stable, sort of, or as stable as you can.
Yeah.
And then you have to explain what's going on to the ambulance drive to the transport ambulance and then they have to plan it when they get to the hospital. And that's a problem, but not having a response at all is also a problem.
Correct.
And I personally would like to see a short cost modification. And we also talked about the fact that engine one is a big truck to drive around and there are small driveways and all that. I get the SUV, but I can't, we can't get you with an SUV today. We probably can get you. Sorry?
Right, no, go ahead. I was just trying to ask about the force truck. Could that be?
So the problem with the, it's all the medications have to be, we have, they have to be secure and controlled, etc. That's not a problem. That would be the money for the cabinet with engine one.
So does that have room in the force?
Yeah, there's there's not enough room to stick all that in there. With that, so and and you want an absolute viable option. The only thing it doesn't solve is if Essex is just calling for paramedics, we still have to send our ambulance on a town to deliver that service, which is completely fine. It's how it's going on right now. It just decreases our ability to transport a patient and we can certainly stabilize.
It doesn't, it doesn't reduce it from what it is now, because we only have, so it actually, it it's, we, yes, they call, we have to send the ambulance, but.
The engine would be left in town.
The engine would be left in town.
Yeah.
And and, you know. Those serious emergencies are when you're not getting blood to your brain and that has to be dealt with. Whereas even even a stroke, there's time. There's some time. Well, not, oh, okay.
So I I'll tell you, so we can, we can, you know, somebody dislocates a hip or something like that and give them pain medicine to make them comfortable until ambulance comes from out of town. The things we can't fix are heart attacks, they need definitive care, they need to have a cardiac cap and strokes need to get to the hospital because they're on they're on a time constraint. Clot busting drug. So those are the two that are time sensitive and that would be the benefit to this kind of a change in model that I'm pondering.
But even even the the SUV model, you're the transport is 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 the lions when they get there.
Oh, oh, correct, absolutely. The only the only addition that the SUV does is two things. It allows us to keep our ambulance in town.
Yes.
Because now that we were running three and four people, we're always gonna have somebody available to utilize that SUV. You know, and it's available. So that that's the only thing that changes.
I I'm not saying we don't do the SUV.
Oh, no, it's fine.
What I'm saying is can we do something now?
Yeah.
Do the SUV there.
And and do the SUV when we can have a town meeting and 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 transfer some money.
Absolutely. And and the.
At town meeting, that was announced that we were gonna outfit engine one.
Engine one is already been approved.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we're waiting for the cabinetry. Well, we need to pass inspection first, which is.
Okay, right, right, right.
Cabinetry and then the state has to come in and inspect it as well. It ought to give it the.
It's not gonna make any, it's not, it's short money. It's not gonna make anything worse.
Yep.
And and.
Yeah, that's fine.
If we can get it by the finance.
To that point, because you've identified a ladder truck.
Uh, there are a few out there. So I met by a part of the canyon who's done a lion chair of the work before I came. We saw, we met with one vendor, we meet with two this week and then potentially one the next week. There are not a lot of ladder trucks to be had. Currently, Swapska's looking for one. There's three or four other towns just in our immediate that are looking for them.
And Essex is about to.
And Essex is about to. So we're looking at, we're asking the vendors a couple of different questions. One, our minimum, we don't have a big want list. Hundred feet water, basically a tip load, so it can do what we needed to do, which they all do. This is very common. So the other one is how long is until we actually take it? Delivery of it. If we spec one out, it's thirty six months at a minimum to get the truck here. Thirty six from the time that we.
The new truck.
A new truck. So there's a couple demo models coming off the line the end of this year, so December, but all the demo models, the manufacturers hold for kind of a show period where they run them around to, so they have a six month hold. So my hope is that this time next year, we'll have a ladder built. That's my hope. I can't guarantee it based upon the deliveries, because they keep pushing them out, but that's the best case scenario. There's no used ones out there that have less than fifty or sixty thousand miles on them. And we don't think that's a lot, but that's also fifteen to eighteen years old. So our return on investment is, I mean, it's basically just buy ourselves a couple of years. So we're actively looking at that. I'm hoping to have something back to you guys by your next meeting, honestly. Hopefully, we're gonna, we don't have a big laundry list. Like, if we were specing a truck, we'd want a thousand things on it. Where it's pretty simplistic want is what we're looking for, so we should have that to you guys very shortly. Because we don't want to miss out the opportunity to get one of those ones that are already in production that are gonna become a demo model.
So the primary strategy is to get in line for a demo?
Yes.
Okay.
One that they've already, one the dealerships kind of design a truck that they want to showcase.
Yes, and they drove it around for, I don't know, a year or something and then.
Yeah.
So you get a lot of lifetime.
Yes, exactly.
And what's the discount on that relative to a new one?
It's honestly, there's no, it'll give discounts, because right now it's the seller's market. It's, and that's the tough part about it, is everything gets, you know, picked up. We don't they announce that this is available, we had basically twenty four hours to say, yep, we want it. Otherwise, another town grabs it. It goes that quick. It's almost like the housing market when houses don't even hit the market and they're gone. Very simple.
So, so. We have all, I'm just trying to think ahead. You find something, let's say you find something next week.
Yep.
Do we have all the logistic, what are the steps that need to happen to give him the go ahead? Do we need to call a special meeting? Does he have all the, all of the stuff is in place? You don't need anything from us. Okay. Just wanted to double check.
Check.
Okay. Selling the old ladder.
Yep. The previous chief had reached out to two different used fire truck vendors. I want to say, Greg might have a number, but I want to say as well, between fifty and a hundred thousand dollars is what they were offering. What I had done is I've just taken a bunch of pictures of our current ladder truck. I was gonna send it out to the Fire Chiefs Association of all the contiguous states around us that don't have a. That don't have emission standards and because everyone's waiting three years for a ladder truck. They might spend a hundred and fifty, two hundred thousand dollars to buy ours, to buy them three years until theirs comes off the production. I might be dreaming, but I'm going to try it, so. Worst case scenario, we could trade it in on the purchase of a new one. You know, no one else bites. Seller's market that we can cash in on a little bit.
Just one more question, so you, it looks like you've done, in the, in the two weeks you've been here, you've done a lot of analysis, etc. Is there any data you wish you had that you don't?
A lot, actually, and, and some of it's not. The, the transition from firehouse to the IMC, so there's a lot. It's not comparing apples to apples, and I guess that's the hard part about it is I can't run one, you know, run numbers, you know. January first to May in one system and then run from May to now, it's, they don't.
Some hard anciliation.
So that's why one of the big things I'm going to be working with tomorrow with the office meeting is making sure the software package that we're looking at. Meets our needs. Everyone else that has used it has loved it. And you can get real time data and kind of execute on that data pretty quickly, so.
Is there anything else that you need from us?
No, what would you say are, obviously a lot of truck, what would you say are your biggest concerns or things you'd like me to accomplish in? Six months or so. As a, as a guide.
Well, along the lines of what Ian said, you know, definitely getting the second ALS. ASAP, whatever. So that's number one, but number two, as, as, what I'd like to see is a. Maybe six months out rather than three, but as we're getting into the budget season, we talk about cap and stuff, it would be nice to see a thoughtful plan. On the apparatus, right? To the best of your ability, just a short time under the belt here. It's nice to have a, a sense as to what's coming, right? As opposed to, you know, one a week, I'd like this and another week, I'd like something else, so a plan.
I, I will honestly say the current plan that's, has kind of been detailed to each by Chief Cleary. Is not far off the mark. I think my only concern with the way it's laid out timeline. Is how long it takes to get the vehicles in the door. So maybe, you know, planning on moving those up a year or so, because we know it's going to take that much time. So we're not spending a lot of money on maintenance of vehicles.
That's exactly.
Forecasting now.
It's the plan, it's nice to know when we have to have it in the house, but there are prerequisite steps that are not in the plan. And then we get caught a little flat footed, so that, that's kind of my. Wish list.
Oh, covered everything.
Been a busy two weeks, but.
You can see that.
Kind of my plan, if you guys are okay with it, I'll meet up with Todd to grab what he does for his quarterly thing. But I was going to submit one of these monthly to you, just to kind of keep you in the loop of what we're doing, just a quick short. Do you kind of have an idea what's going on?
I, I, I think for, for a quarterly review, we'd like to have more, I would like to have more of a narrative. And the bullet point stuff, monthly, if we just. That'd be cream in my coffee.
Yeah, no, but, but, and in, in that regard, maybe Todd can put something together that's monthly at the same, same.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll share.
Less than a page.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you for sitting through all of that.
Oh, yeah.
Three bullets, I didn't do much of a there. What would you like to hear more about or focus on?
I'm going to pass that on to Kathy. An answer?
Thank you, okay. I thought it was a great quarter. Actually, the only questions I had was a little follow up on some of our prior discussions, specifically succession plan. Has any action been taken on that yet? And if not, when? It's, it's really important.
Yeah, so. Had some informal conversations with some department leaders in terms of what their interest might be for their future. And then also specifically in their department, are there changes that are needed in terms of second in command? So, not a lot has happened. But those are the informal conversations that have taken place.
So I think it's really important, though, in order for us to make progress here, but there to be a plan to make progress. And so specifically. My experience, that's been identic, number one, identify candidates. And I'm speaking right now in terms of your position, and then if you set an example that others can follow, you know. Kind of sets the tone, but identifying candidates and whether or not they're. And assessing their readiness level. So if Greg hit the lottery, he hits that powerball, is one of them ready to step in? If the answer is no, then the question is, the next level question is, how long would it take to get them ready? Is it one year, two years, three years? And then the third question is, what? Development, not necessarily training, but what development is needed to get them ready? And that's, that's, you know. One way of getting to a plan, but I, I think the informality only gets you so far. At some point. There's got to be some. Plan of action.
But I think, I think it needs to be too prone. I mean. Looking house, but, but it may not be.
Well, that's exactly right. However, you know, if, if Greg hit the, you know, lottery tomorrow, right? You know, there's two avenues, there's, is there somebody ready now? And, and if the answer is no, you know.
I think there's somebody perhaps ready to be a very short interim, and then we would hire an interim, because. These, the, the job, the, the manager jobs in the small town are very siloed.
Understood, I understand that.
Somebody who's got the skills to be a DPW director does not necessarily have the skills or the interest to be a town manager.
I a hundred percent agree with you. My point only is, understanding the current state. Involves not only having informal conversations with people, but if one of your directs expresses an interest. Then I think a plan can be put together to help that person get ready. I, I think that's always a good thing to have. You know, and, and it's just an example, it's.
The town clerk has a set of very distinct skills and experiences. And, and. May look to be a town clerk in a much bigger town.
Absolutely.
But the progression here. Has been since we've had even an executive secretary. The person comes in from outside and you, there are a group of people who are retired. Town administrators who can usually be found to come in on a month or a couple of months' notice. And then you have a long hard search and try and find somebody who is a long term, and that's.
I, I think, I understand that, and I understand that it's a valid process. Succession planning serves two purposes, though. It serves to fill a role. It also serves as development conversations for key personnel. And so even if the people have an interest and it, it forces development conversations. And, and that can be good for someone, it is good for someone's career. And even if they decide to move on to another town or whatever, having those development conversations is, is. I just feel it's very important to treat people well in, in a professional world. It's not always just about the paycheck, it's about taking care of other things, and I, this has always been a part of my leadership toolkit. And I've said.
Abs- absent that. You've got two more years?
We've got two. Two more years? Okay, I was going to ask that question, so.
About a year, we're going to start.
Well.
And wanting to have a nice seamless transition. As opposed to getting the water.
Not to that point, I mean, I, I, I don't know what your life has been, not, not just here, I mean, your whole life in terms of how you got into this whole deal. I mean, you just jumped right into a town manager's job, or were you involved in finance or something before and?
I was the town planner and they pulled me up from the basement.
There you go.
I guess, and my question, you've been down three or four different towns. About three different towns, and I don't know how succession planning has gone in those, whether you have taken an active role or you just. You know, moved on, etc. But has there been a lot of internal grooming or any internal grooming for internal candidates, or have all of those instances? They've had to reach out for people who have experience in other towns. Because I think all the towns you've been at are, are small.
Yeah, they're, they're all three years.
And that's very different from dealing with.
They've all been in this five to six thousand.
Okay, all right, so.
So they've been small communities.
Right, right, where you have to know a lot about a lot of stuff because you have not got a lot of staff. So, yes, you do, so, and have they, is typically the succession process been, we've got to get somebody outside? Or has that happened?
So, so when I moved up from the trainer to the manager, that was, that was just manager announces resignation and they just said.
Said, you're the guy.
You have any interest in, I said, gulp, sure, I'll try it. So that was, I was sort of fire by fire.
Yes, it was. How difficult.
How difficult that? The most difficult thing was I was very young. I was in my early thirties, so I was managing everybody else who was older than me, so that was a challenge.
I think the key, one of the key situations. I would want us to avoid and, and where succession planning can help. Is I would never want one of Greg's direct reports to feel that they want Greg's job. And not have been given the opportunity to learn what is necessary in order to be competitive. In, in, in a hiring process. That's really the situation you want to avoid. We have a great, Greg has hired. Outstanding direct reports, he really has, the, the team is great. You would never want to demotivate someone because they weren't given an opportunity to develop. And that, if, if some, one of his direct reports wanted the job, you know, it would. Be the, either be a baptism by fire or a, a year's effort to try and get them the skills needed. But I, it just, it can be very demotivating to, to look up and say, yeah, I'd like to have my boss's job someday and not. Have an opportunity to learn. That's really, that's really what I seek to avoid.
When I've wanted my boss's job, I've told him. And, and that may be, I don't think you need to go asking people if they have the motivation to do it. They should have the motivation to come out and say, they know you're, that you're in, in short time.
People are different, so I mean, there, I've seen it happen a lot of different ways. Because I had the luxury of working for a larger organization and you would be surprised that. Somebody who may be a little bit more of an introvert and not feel comfortable. Wanting some, or saying that they want something, it's, it's, it does a lot of factors involved. So I just, like I said, I think Greg has a really awesome team and, and I think. Understanding what their career goals are, what, what, well, no, what their career goals are, it's part of leadership. And developing their talents, whatever direction they want to go in, you know. Whatever direction they want to go in, helping them achieve their career goals, I think is part of Greg's job. And that's what I would like to just.
Oh, I think you're doing a great job.
It's, it's nice to see. Grace hires and the way the departments are now running. We've got some, some real stars. Same to enjoy what they're doing.
Definitely got some very good people.
That's not an accident.
Speaking of hiring, how, how was, how are the two hiring initiatives for library and planner going?
Libraries, we have some very good candidates. Those interviews are taking place this week. So we should hope to advance that along, the planning, planning positions just getting up. So it's in the early stages. Probably have someone else work full time by. So, just giving you that away.
Oh. Can we? Is, are, are we satisfied with this? Peter has been patiently waiting for a chance to talk about the fine structure for well inspections. And. That's next. And. What I would like to know. I, I've read, you know, I have a couple of questions about what is the. The malfeasance that causes the fines?
I was just, that was my question, gee, answer it. You asked it already, yeah.
So, Peter.
You just, you just woke me up.
Sorry.
No, it's fine. How can I help you?
We have, and I of course can't find it at the moment, we have the document that says, okay, once. Once there has been a problem. What's the problem that, that, that causes these fines to occur?
There's two possible issues. Now, one is not testing. The quality of the water on a regular basis.
Okay.
The state is recommending annually. The EPA is supporting that particularly if they're in situations where the septic systems. They're finding that older septic systems, ten years and above. Leach field tends to migrate into the water cable. And the water cable can't, may or may not be connected to all your neighbors, so it may not be just yourself. That's. In danger, you may, the whole neighborhood. So, and the other thing is if they find something wrong, that you need to correct it. It's usually a biological agent, a pathogen, that's typically what they find. And, and you hire a company to do that. The fines. Are suggested by the state of Massachusetts, they gave us a draft that was pretty, pretty thorough. Personally comfortable with one portion of it, but tell me if you. They are recommending increasing fines where none compliance, that's fine, I get that. The threat of a big fine down the road tends to get everyone's attention. Their range was ten dollars a day up to five hundred dollars a day. And they're suggesting that we send the, we would send the letter out every day. Day one, you owe us ten dollars, day two, you owe us twenty, that's not use of the staff, quite frankly. Send letters out every day for ten dollars more. Greg has come up with a suggestion of, of a larger fine. What we need to work in, and that, the suggestion's fine, we're comfortable with that. We need to, we need to somehow work in a lag time. We need to somehow work in a lag time. So, if you're notified that you need to have your testing by August first. And you've hired a company but they haven't come yet, that's fine, you know, it's not your fault, no fines. If you just ignore it, at some point, you get back to them and say, it's now August fifteenth, you haven't hired anyone. You're all gonna be fined fifty dollars a day, now. The question is, is the fifty dollars a day increasing to what and when? And that's the part that we're kinda. Um, trying to work through right now, but, so I'd like your comments on, are you comfortable with an escaline fine system? Um, number one. And then number two is the recommended fines range from fifty dollars for first offense. Up to five hundred. For, uh, what, for offenses going forward, now look. The problem with that is they, they state the fines every day that you're not complying as a new separate offense. Uh, I'm not comfortable with that, I think we need to do some kind of a. A period for each fine, maybe it's a week, maybe it's two weeks, and if you haven't. You know, complied after two weeks, then go to level two. Uh, which is supposed to be fifty dollars, two hundred dollars. Uh, I don't think you can do this on a daily basis, I don't think it's fair or practical. But everything else, we're kinda comfortable with. We plan to, uh, circulate. A proposal to August to all of the boards, the pockets in town. And then have a public meeting late September. And it would be gnarly. Private wells used for drinking, irrigation, not irrigation in agriculture, but also, uh, general reading wells. Any, any questions?
Yeah, I, I've got a question, Peter, have, have, have in the past, say, three years, have we, we had people that have had violations associated with their wells? In town here?
I have no idea, um, our current. Our current regulation is very, very. Um, explicit on location, uh, construction. And testing of water quality and volume prior to usage. Once you construct a well, there's no regulation.
Okay.
So we're working in the dark here, I mean, putting this together, but it's not like we've had experience with offenders, shall we say?
We have no idea, all I can tell you is EPA has done a, um. Pretty extensive study in the southeast, cause this, this is the most. Private wells in construction with septic. And, and they've found a lot of pathogens, uh, in situations where the leach field was more than ten, ten years old. It obviously varies, but ten plus years, there's pathogens in the drinking water. And it's in the whole, uh, area, it's in, it's in the whole, it goes aquifer to aquifer.
Do you know how many drinking water wells there are in town?
Um, the record is big. We think it's somewhere, um, the drinking water well somewhere off thirty, maybe to forty. It's, it's, it's hard to say because there's a lot of wells that were. Uh. Registered as agricultural or irrigation and, um. We have no idea if that was truly other ways.
Would, would, is D C don't know what, what houses there are that are not on town water?
That, that would make sense, yeah.
There are some, well, yeah, we can tell by volume. So I'd say there's some that are on town water officials.
But also using wells, okay, okay.
But wells for drinking, in other words, wells.
Could be, yeah.
Oh, it could be for irrigation too, I mean, there are a lot of outlets like that. I, I, I assume that when wells are registered, they can be registered as, for, as you say, agriculture or drinking or irrigation or whatever. Different classes?
That's correct.
Okay.
And they're supposed to report to the, uh, to the state, I'm sorry, when they decommission a well, and, uh, none has been reported. As long as you're for the.
Yeah, I, I, I think there are a lot of lessons learned here from the water task force conversation we had earlier in the day. And I apologize if, if, I had a little trouble hearing, um, everything that you were saying, Peter. Um. If we're talking about penalizing folks for something and. They're not, we're, we're, we're at the stage where we don't even have a clear inventory of wells. Um, I think this seems to be a long process, right? So, you know, first step might be identifying who owns the wells. Uh, number two, educating them on their responsibilities, um. Number three, you know, then asking them to do a test, I mean, so there's gonna be some sort of a, a process here.
Yeah, we, we have a list of the wells, but we don't know anything about.
Right, so I guess my point is before, I, I like the idea of a fine structure that, um. Uh, is graduated and, and penalizes repeat offenders. Uh, more than, you know, first offenders, however, it just feels like we're a long way from penalizing anybody. If our well owners in town may be completely unaware that they have some testing responsibilities, I just. I think this is a, I appreciate the heads up and, and I think it's.
And, and I agree with Peter that, that.
That would be any new private well, we'd have to follow this requirement.
Going from fifty dollars on one day to five hundred dollars on day four is.
Pretty fast.
Yeah. No opportunity to correct anything.
Yeah.
Right, right.
Fifty dollars per day until it's corrected, and once that's done, if there's a second offense.
Uh, I don't feel educated enough.
The order as issued or sustained.
Oh.
Yeah, each day's failure to comply with the order as issued or sustained shall constitute a separate violation.
Yeah.
Right, so we did do it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, and, and. And, so. I think we have agreement that, that. Graduated fines are a good idea, graduated fines should go up more slowly. And for me. Um. When the board issues an order, it would be nice to have more than seven days. Because sometimes seven days go by without my paying much attention. Or even being present in town with my meal, right, yeah, so.
Much less getting somebody to come in and fix it.
Yeah.
No, ac- actually, all we would require is them to make an attempt to get somebody. You know, that's all, just to show that you haven't ignored us.
They're responsive.
They're responsive, and it would be, uh, for new wells to start. And then we could, uh, as you suggested, let others know that, uh, we'll start with the ones that are. Drinking water only. You really need to start testing annually, give them an education, give them a year to. You know, get used to it, if you will. Um, I would think that if you're using it for drinking water, you'd be very interested to see. Uh, the quality of that water, but, you know, that's just me, others may not care. Um, yeah, the next would be used for agriculture since you're gonna be eating that. Or loose sooner or later. Um, and then we can work down to the, your irrigation. Multi-use, uh, wells, but. The idea would be any brand new well that's to meet these, these requirements. Uh, wells for drinking water only. Um. You have some time to phase in, we, I agree that we need to stretch out, we need to define. What, what the lag time is and. Uh, make it more than, you know, a week. Just respond to us and, you know, and that, that would be. Uh, phase one of compliance, uh, just the response. And then we can take it from there, the idea is fourteen days, fourteen, the idea is not to crucify these people. But.
To incentivize them.
To incentivize them for their own good, yeah, and we've had issues with, with septic, where this is supposed to be. Inspected every five years, and we send them a letter up, a letter up, a letter, and, uh, we never hear a word, so.
Do you have what you need from us? Tonight?
I do, I wanted to keep you in the loop and get your comments, and I, I appreciate your comments, and I will. Take them, you know, to heart and make the necessary adjustments.
Thank you, and thank you for bringing this to our attention.
Thank you.
Peter.
Thank you for your time.
Yep. We did that, we already did that.
So I think, uh, what's left is a couple of cons- some items.
Yep, I, I, I think we can do without liaison offer. I think liaisons have been heard from. Um. We have a joint legal representation, uh, concept one. Which. Uh.
Well, so this is for pursuing the potential shared services. Uh, and we both use K P law, so, because we both use the same legal firm, we need to have this disclosure form signed. So if you're comfortable with that, get your signature on it, and you can proceed.
Okay.
Okay, you need a follow motion?
No, yes, please.
I move to approve the legal representation of the concept.
Second.
Discussion. Ready to vote, Brian?
Yeah, yes, Kansas, yes.
John says, yes.
Okay. Um.
Uh, one other consent item, oh, I'm lying, a short-term guest license. I was somewhere, sixteen hours ago. So this is a house where the owners are living, and they wanna run out the, basically the downstairs quarters.
Built to family, or was used as a to family.
Everything seems to be in order, comes in the paperwork and, um. Everything's been reviewed, so I think it's ready for you.
Okay.
I move to approve, um, the short-term guest license at sixteen thousand seven hundred.
Second.
Discussion, ready to vote, Brian?
Yes.
Kansas, yes.
John says, yes.
That was a question, I guess, uh.
Oh, sorry.
Eli had this happen.
Eli.
Yeah. Yeah, sorry, so, um, in the discussion items, you were gonna talk about Powder Hill access, and I don't think you did that, is, could you give me a brief summary of what you were going to talk about? But you're probably not going to tonight.
We, we did talk about that, um, and the summary is that. Of when, uh. The housing, when the housing was built, they built it on an easement that was supposed to give. Uh, a place for people who wanted to go, like, uh, walk on Powder House Hill, um, could park. And until recently, there were two parking spaces that had been used by people. And the housing authority has decided that that's inconvenient, they need that, that parking, and.
Okay.
So we, we agreed that we would, um, send a letter. Um, saying, hey, it's, you, you're, you're on our easement, we need access, let's figure out some way to make this work.
Okay, thank you, um, uh, uh, appreciate it, thank you.
Did you have anything else to say about that, cause? We took it way out of order.
No, I understand, I, I'm, I'm realizing you didn't have a time index on it, and you had those things going, so, um, if I have any questions, I'll take it up later, thank you.
Thank you.
Short term.
Yes, we did.
Yeah, we did.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I made the motion, John seconded it, and, and.
Yeah, no, I'm good. Uh, so quickly, my report, um, just a few items here, um. And this committee is, is meeting through the summer, uh, this focus on the most recent meeting was focused on, uh. Possible modification to how reserve is calculated. Um, looking to potentially exclude the school budget from that calculation, since the school budget has its own.
Reserve.
All, all reserves in, in effect. So, I'm actually less concerned about what that, uh. That the target number is, uh. Uh, because I'm more concerned about just the total number of dollars where, where there be committed to capital. Our capital needs are large, and you get a sense of that. Through this budget season, we, we'll give you a much better picture of the longer term, look with the facility plan and, and other needs. Um, so, it'll be important discussions about the amount of money that we are able to devote to capital.
Either whether it comes from taxation or, or from.
Um, taxation bonding. Uh, grants, whatever, all, all of the above.
Available funds, correct. Over the years, available funds are gonna go. There'll be a lot of available funds to use as they lower from ten percent to five percent.
Those, those go very quick, and you're talking two million dollars. So.
Is, is your concern about the amount of money that we're sitting on, or about the money, amount of money that we spend on capital each?
I'm not worried about the money we're sitting on, that, that'll.
Okay, I know the capital budget.
That'll go very quick.
Yes.
Uh, and we can, we can get it. You know, if we've got next to two million in the bank, that's, that's easy to spend, and, and legitimate needed pro- projects. Uh, but my bigger concern is just long-term, how much money we are able to put into capital.
And, cause some of those demands are pretty big.
Yes, exactly.
It's, it's, the big ones don't worry me so much because they would be bonded. It's what we have available for streets and pipes. And projects that are too small, but could be aggregated and bonded, but, um, that's a mess, and it.
So, I'm not trying to resolve it tonight, and just flagging it as an, an important point of discussion during the next few months. Um. And sort of along those lines, we'll skip down to number three, which is the school budget, and how that is gonna be dealt with, um. Now, basically, we sort of kicked the can, uh, with, with the new school budget that was approved. And we'd need to come up with, um, a real game plan, working with the school, uh, committee and working with. Partners in Essex, um, you know, way forward, that's gonna work for everybody. Um, I think those discussions will be getting underway soon, which is good. I think we should get those discussions underway in, in August if we can, and, uh, again, it's gonna take some real. Um, candid conversations to, to move that forward. So it may include opening up the, uh, the agreement, and taking a look at that portion of formula. Uh, so, there'd be lots of different, lots of different aspects in that conversation. Moving for a challenging fall. And then, on a wholly unrelated note, uh, grease in the sewer system. Uh, grease, uh, causes havoc at the sewer plant in terms of, uh, keeping the good bugs alive and, and. Decomposing the solid waste that we wanted to, uh, and so we just need to encourage and. Manage people to not put grease down the drain, uh, you know, but we'll certainly focus on our restaurants, because the.
Is that something the board helps deals with?
Yeah, they'll be helping with this.
Okay.
Uh, so they're, they're required to have grease traps, uh, at, at the restaurants. What happens is sometimes the hot water is from the dishwasher is too close to the grease trap. And so all of that grease gets dissolved by the hot water, goes down the drain, and then solidifies in the plant. And that causes significant problems. Uh, so, yes, we'll be reaching out to the restaurants in particular, uh, but a, a general note of. It's all people, if anyone who's got a disposal, putting food down the drain, try to avoid restoring the drain.
Oh, this kind of even obliquely gets involved with water management.
Yes, it does.
And I'm just looking at the water bills that are going out, and you can put something in there, it's, it's related to that.
Correct.
You know, water's coming out of your faucet, you gotta think about what's going on.
So, um. Struggling a little bit at the plant right now in terms of odor and processing. Culprit is a lot of grease. So we we see a spike in grease during the summer. Obviously, our restaurants are busier in the summer. Uh, so it does cause problems.
I haven't noticed the odor recently, but I did. When was it? Two months ago? Wrestling with that?
The uh the filtration system.
Okay, but that was solved.
That was solved.
Now we got the.
Uh, fans that weren't working in the medium needed to. This hot weather. Hasn't helped you. So it's it's FYI, but we will be reaching out to folks with information and and working with the board of health with the restaurants specifically. To see if we can um make sure that those grease straps are working properly. So that'll do it.
Thank you. Thank you for putting us on.
Thank you.
Good night, folks.
Come on, Eli. Thank you for picking me up.
Your refrigerator died last.